All right. If people could take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started with today's meeting. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, May 7, 2025, meeting of the California Coastal Commission. I'd like to ask Ms. Miller to please call the roll.
Commissioner Aguirre. Commissioner O'Malley.
President.
Commissioner Dumalaw. Commissioner Ecklerly.
Here.
Commissioner Escalante.
Here.
Commissioner Harmon.
Here.
Commissioner Hart.
President.
Commissioner Rodoni.
Here.
Commissioner Nodoff.
Here.
Commissioner Uranga.
Present.
Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Wilson.
Aki.
Chair Cummings.
Here.
You have a call.
All right. I'd like to ask staff if there's any changes to the agenda for today.
Testing, testing. Do you want to do the hybrid meeting procedures?
Oh, sorry about that. I meant to, yeah, let's get virtual meeting procedures. We'll go back to Chris.
Good morning. This Coastal Commission meeting is occurring both in person and through Zoom. This meeting is also being webcast and can be viewed online at cal-span.org. If you have access to the Internet and wish to watch or listen to the meeting only and not speak on an item, we recommend you use the CalSpan website. Those who wish to address the Commission today can do so in person through the Zoom platform or by phone. The speaker request forms may be found on the Commission's webpage. Paper forms and a scannable QR code for paperless submittal are available on the Commission's staff table just outside the meeting room. For those on Zoom, we have posted virtual hearing procedures on the Commission's Agenda webpage, which is a guide on providing comments via Zoom or by phone. Members of the public speaking during general public comment may be given up the two minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. Requests to speak during the general public comment period will not be accepted after 9:00 a.m. on each day of the meeting. In order to provide the opportunity for the broadest range of public participation, you may speak on a specific topic one time only each month. Those speaking on an agenda item that is not general public comment are typically allowed two to three minutes to speak at the discretion of the chair. We will accept a request to speak on an item until the chair opens the hearing on that particular item. If you have access to the Internet, please go to the Commission's webpage and click on the link to fill out a speaker request. If you do not have Internet access or prefer to testify by phone, please call the Commission staff at (562) 477-9089. Again, that number is (562) 477-9089. Staff will provide you with the telephone call-in number and instructions for how to participate and provide testimony by phone. We will manage speakers coming in and out of the meeting through a meeting organizer. When it is your time to address the Commission, the organizer will invite you to turn on your video and microphone or provide instructions on how to unmute the phone. Chair Cummings, that concludes the virtual hearing procedures.
Thank you very much. Okay, now I'll turn it back to staff for changes on the agenda.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Good morning to the Commission and to everybody who's in attendance today. We do have quite a number of changes to the agenda this morning. The list that I published on Friday, of course, remains accurate. I have a couple additions to that. Read those in the order on the agenda. So, starting with item 10A, that is move to consent, and that's Application 122509, the City of Crescent City's Beachfront Park Improvements Project. Item 10B is postponed. That's Application 123744 from Pacific Gas and Electric Company for a project in Humboldt and Mendocino Counties. This morning, we're adding item 12B as a move to consent. That's the City of Dana Point's LCP Amendment on their strand transit system language update. Item 13A is postponed. That's Appeal A5LGB254, the Oatman Architects Matter in Laguna Beach. Item 14A is postponed. That's Application 52310. Applicant is Carver for San Clemente. Item 14B is postponed. It's Application 523831, Thompson Trust and First American Trust in Newport Beach. Item 14C is moved to consent. And there's three projects here for the City of Seal Beach Public Beach Parking Lots. And those are 14C, 14D, and 14E. Those are all moved to consent. Item 14G is postponed. That's Application 52513 for a project on San Gabriel River Highway Bridge right at the border of LA and Orange County. That's postponed. Item 16A is moved to consent. That's the City of Encinitas LCP Amendment on the El Camino Real specific plan. Item 16B is postponed. City of San Diego's LCP Amendment on their transit priority area parking reform. Item 16C is postponed. It's the City of San Diego's LCP Amendment related to their Housing Action Package 2.0. Item 16D is moved to consent. It's the City of Imperial Beach's LCP Amendments on their alternative and temporary housing and density bonus update. Item 18A is moved to consent. That's Application 623589. Applicant is Bates from Solana Beach. Item 18B is withdrawn. That's Application Number 62456 from, that's the UCSD Scripps Reserve Managed Access. And then adding this morning, item 18C, which is postponed. That's Application 624375, the Rubenstein Project in San Diego. And that completes the agenda changes.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to general public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us on items that are not on the agenda. And I'll turn it over to Chris to kick us off on public comment.
All right, thank you. For members of the public, I will be announcing the names of the upcoming speakers and invite you to speak when it is your turn. Each speaker will be allowed two minutes to speak during general public comment at the discretion of the chair. In order to allow for live video testimony on Zoom, we will be bringing you in as panelists. As we bring you in, your Zoom will reload. This may take a moment. To speed up this process, we will bring several people in at a time, but please remain muted and keep your video off until we ask you to speak. After your time is up, you'll be moved back to attendee mode. For members of the public present in the room, I will call your names in the order that they appear in our signup list. When you hear your name, please line up behind the podium and announce yourself with your name when you approach to speak. Several helpful tips. There is a raise your hand function that will help us find you in the attendee list. If you're using a phone for audio, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. If you are participating by Zoom, you should see a button on your Zoom screen. If you have signed up to speak for this item and are able to do so, please raise your hand now. When it is your time to speak, we will invite you to unmute and turn on your camera. You can unmute yourself on a phone by dialing *6. So, today, we have 27 speakers sign up for general public comment. And we're starting with people in the room. We have Patricia Opats, Judy Taylor, Garrett Kidahada, and Dan Sedgink. If you've heard your name in a personal mic. Patricia Opats.
How about that? I'm Patricia Opats from Fort Bragg, California. And I came here in person to speak to you, particularly to thank you for your support in being, for persevering in this political environment. But more specifically, for your perseverance in supporting the City of Fort Bragg in their litigation against Mendocino Railway and Sierra Northern. I brought for each one of you commissioners a 46-page thank you card. I didn't sign it because it was written by Ernest Hemingway. It's a copy of his Old Man in the Sea, Man Against Nature, Nature Against Man, Old Age, Resilience, Perseverance. The current 90-day stay, this lawsuit, in this lawsuit, has flipped the focus of the lawsuit from the Coastal Commission and the City of Fort Bragg's jurisdiction into the coastal development plan for a resort by the Skunk Train. The City of Fort Bragg, all of this happened behind closed doors. The City of Fort Bragg, with your help, is kind of like Santiago in The Old Man in the Sea. He has persevered the loss of a logging, the diminished fishing industry, and the hostile takeover by eminent domain of one-third of the city's footprint, one-third of the city's footprint on the bluffs of the Pacific Ocean. This lawsuit should go to trial. It should not be settled in the stay. Otherwise, we, like Hemingway's Santiago, may end up with private development on our city's waterfront that looks like Santiago's 20-foot marlin.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
A shark-eaten carcass. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Judy Taylor, Garrett Kidahada, and Dan Sedgink.
Good morning. 51-year coastside resident. And we had done until you folks showed up. Not happy about that. Anyways, the reason I'm here today, I'm here as a Realtor representing Sam Car and Smart Coast, California. Want to thank you for what you've done for the Stone Pine Project. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's what we want to see more of. And while you're here, please do take a look at Big Wave. It's just around the corner here. The residents got to go in a couple of weeks ago and put their pictures on where their rooms are going to be. Please, as we move forward, more Stone Pines and fewer 25 years to get to Big Wave. The other reason that I'm here today, representing both entities, has to do with what's going on out at Seal Cove. I have an attorney client. I sold him his house in the 80s. We knew that there was cliff erosion, but not what's going on today. Four years ago, an FHA appraisal, no problems with his house. And today, he's looking at being red-tagged. When you folks are doing your residential adaptation policy guidance, your suggestion as to what to do with this is that he should have, over the last 40 years, prepared to lose his home. That's unrealistic. The image of most of the California coastal property owners is a mega wealthy Hollywood star or tech investor like Venedkosla. Those are not the people who live here. His next across the neighbor is 94 years old, and she was born in that house. Her parents had no idea what was going to go on 100 years down the road when they chose where to put their house. And the Fifth Amendment taking clause is there because the framers of the Constitution knew that people had to be able to keep what was theirs over time for society to be stable. And what we're dealing with now is Mother Nature doesn't give a rat's.
Thank you so much. We appreciate.
And we need to find a way to keep.
Ma'am, we appreciate your comments. We appreciate, we appreciate your comments.
Okay, I was looking for a timer, didn't see it. I'm imploring you.
Thank you.
Look through the lens of how do we treat these people fairly.
Ma'am, you can follow up with us on email. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Garrett Kidahada, Dan Sedgink, Eileen Boken, and Christine Bowles.
All right, good morning, Commissioners. So, I'm Garrett, and I just have a super brief public comment about the issue arising with the decommissioning of the oil rigs off the coast of Santa Barbara. So, Platform Holly in particular, the oil wells underneath the ocean floor have been plugged as of September 2024. So, as from a personal perspective, that the State Lands Commission, which I believe is connected to the Coastal Commission here, retains these structures, leaves them intact, in particular Platform Holly, for future use or maintenance, one, but also because they are symbols and representative as relics of the past. And this is actually from a documentary called Titans that got released in mid-February. There was a film festival in Santa Barbara. And so, I would like to support a movement that would actually keep these structures intact. And the cost of dismantling them is quite expensive. There's some statistics online. And it's, it would be, I think, in the best interest of various stakeholders, including oil companies that would potentially want to recommission any of the oil rigs in the future, to leave the structures intact. And so, I think the priority would be managing a decommission process smoothly and cost-effectively for offshore oil with ultimate transition away from the source. And I think it would be great to talk about and usher in this transition. And so, this is on behalf of a group called America's Green Corps, but it's also just on a personal take that I think the issue happening in Santa Barbara and around the world needs to be managed effectively in terms of the decommissioning process for offshore oil. All right, thank you all.
Thank you. Dan Sedgink, Eileen Boken, and Christine Bowles.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Dan Sedgink. I'm from Pacifica, and I'll just say for the record, it's still sunny up there today. Thanks to all of you for coming here. I regularly hit the Coastal Commission, maybe six times a year on there. And in the spirit of Carol Groom, I'll say I welcome you all here, you know. She's still fighting, and there's a lot of what I would affectionately refer to as spring chickens in the room, but I'm glad to see my new favorite Commissioner, Mr. Uranga, is still here, fighting a good fight here. I will, I will just say for the record that I speak primarily on Native American affairs here, and I roughly stand for everyone that the San Mateo County Association of Realtors does not stand for. For those that didn't know here, right where we are now, 1767, we were Portuguese Jesuit here. Until 1812, we were the Spanish in the Mission Building, when 400,000 Native Americans were reduced to 482 Native Americans. From 1812, we were Mexico until 1848. And for the last 177 years, we've been the United States here. We had a great guardian of the coast in Carol Groom. And I will just say, as new Commissioners, new folks apply here, we have two supervisors here who would be excellent county coastal commissioners, sorry, state coastal commissioners. Former Supervisor Jackie Spear, sorry, former Congresswoman Jackie Spear, and current Supervisor or President David Canepa. Both, one represented the coast, one grew up on the coast, they know it intimately. They are truly champions of the environment. Thanks, thank you for being here, welcome. If you get a chance, head up to lovely Pacifica. We never make the schedule because we don't have any hotels, but check out the quarry there, one of the oldest Native American villages in California. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Eileen Boken, Christine Bowles, and then we'll move on to our Zoom participants.
Eileen Boken, Coalition for San Francisco Neighborhood, speaking on my own behalf. On April 12, there was an event at Ocean Beach, which was attended by the Coastal Commission Executive Director, the North Central Coast District Manager, and a coastal planner. The executive director was also an invited speaker. At the event, the city's Rec and Park Director stated that the two sides had come together. That couldn't be further from the truth. The Great Highway Project was deeply divisive during the election. It was funded heavily by tech oligarchs. It created an unprecedented divide between the east and west sides of the city. Two mayoral candidates opposed it. One is a former coastal commissioner, and the other is a candidate who won. This project continues to be deeply divisive, with a legal challenge, the recall of the district supervisor, and the pretext for turning Ocean Beach into Miami Beach, as well as the complete disregard for mass evacuation and public safety. At this event, the Rec and Park Director also acknowledged the role of surf in the Ocean Beach Master Plan. The role of the Coastal Commission at the April 12 event calls into question the Coastal Commission's objectivity regarding this project. This also begs the question, would Jack Amesworth have committed such, this kind of blunder? Thank you.
Thank you. Christine Bowles. And then our first three Zoom participants will be Adam Leverens, Elena Tillman, and Carol Archibald. Christine Bowles, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Cummings, Commissioners, and staff. My name is Christine Bowles. I'm an architect by profession, and I'm currently serving on the Pacifica City Council as Mayor Pro Tem, which is the vice mayor basically. I know you all are under a lot of pressure at local, state, and federal levels. And I wanted to speak here today in support of the good work that you are doing in and out to protect our coastline, which is one of our most precious resources. The work you're doing is clearly directed by the people of California to balance development and protection of resources. And to protect our beaches and access is so important, not just to California, but to the entire planet, ocean, ecosystem. So, thank you. I also want to express my deep gratitude to Chair Cummings, especially as we do not yet know what Speaker Rivas might be doing in the coming week. I wrote a letter to our Board of Supervisors in San Mateo County in support of your continued service on the Commission. And I just wanted to read it all for you here, knowing that, you know, you might not be here the last time, and that really breaks my heart. Anyway, and hoping Speaker Rivas might be listening. I've been watching Coastal Commission meetings, and I'm so impressed with Chair Cummings. For scientific knowledge, his work with his PhD in ecology, with his commitment to affordable housing in the coastal zone, and for his unique perspective as a person of color and as a tenant himself living on the coast. He also went out of his way to come to Pacifica at Mike O'Neill's invitation to speak in an event here recently, address the public, answer our community's questions. I found him open, honest, and intelligent, not afraid to have the difficult conversations as we strike to balance development amidst the increasing hazards of sea level rise and the coastal act protection. So, thank you. And if any of you want to tour the Pacifica coastline while you're here, reach out. I promise we don't have to talk about the LCLU.
And thank you.
Just to let you know, your flashlight's on on your camera.
And by my count, we have 21 speakers on Zoom, starting with Adam Leverens, Elena Tillman, and Carol Archibald. Adam Leverens.
Good morning, Commissioners. Great, good morning, Commissioners and staff. When we were in person in Long Beach back on February 5, as you heard, the City of Newport Beach has plans to compress the mooring fields permitted to the members of the public, and thus endangering and reducing their access. While at the same time, the harbor master advocated for the plan, which exempted the Yacht Club fields, which is where he has his mooring, a number of Commissioners encouraged the city to work with us regular folks. Commissioner Aguirre even referred to some of these as the experts in the room. Thinking afterwards, I realized that I know a number of licensed captains who also live aboard their boats under heavy regulation and permits. And realizing that these people spend 24/7/365 on the harbor, I have come to agree with Commissioner Aguirre that they are likely experts with more local knowledge than any harbor commissioner or the harbor master. Since that meeting, some of us have reached out to the city to work together, and we have heard little back. But on April 15, as you see on the slide before you, Marin Council voted to approve $1.5 million over the next five years for three different consultants for harbor work. DUDAC is the third-rated. They're the ones that came up with the plan to make losers out of some of us. And my fear is, being that the other two are more highly ranked, in the future, we're going to see more creative plans to try and make something that's detrimental look not detrimental. And I just very much appreciate your continued assistance. And we do hope to work together locally to try and resolve some of this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Elena Tillman, Carol Archibald, and then Susie Whitelaw. Elena Tillman.
Good morning, Commissioners. There is a presentation associated with this as well, if you have that.
Yes, give us a second to bring your presentation up.
Of course.
Go ahead.
Hey. Well, good morning, Commissioners. My name's Elena Tillman, and I'm speaking on the spraying of the chemicals on the La Jolla Bluffs to reduce odors. This was presented before for something, for a request very similarly due to what restaurants perceive as odors, local restaurants perceive as odors produced by the birds on the bluffs in La Jolla. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is an area on the bluff where chemicals had been sprayed. It is proposed to be sprayed. And as you can see, there are birds, there are cormorants, pelicans, and gulls, who are high conservation priority. They nest here in the Mata Wild State Marine Reserve, which is, again, is a marine-protected area located directly below. Next slide, please. Okay, so, as you can see here, this is a chemical compound that is proposed to be sprayed. In 2011, the safety and hazards for humans were as follows: harmful if swallowed, causing skinny rotation, allergic skin reaction, serious eye damage, and very toxic to aquatic life. Next slide, please. Of note, the decomposition products are possible oxides of carbon monoxide and carbon dioxide, which is toxic to aquatic life and can cause climate change. Next slide, please. This is the latest revision out of Coronado in 2020, again stating hazardous by, 2012, OSHA hazardous decomposition products, carbon oxides. The specific test for this mixture is not available. And of note, there is no mention of toxicity to aquatic environment. Next slide, please. Lastly, of note, there's a surfactant that's added to the chemical biohack before spraying. Essentially, this is really important because contamination will cause surface tension of seawater below. Water will fail to form droplets and penetrate the feathered human. Birds can become water lugs. This is very important. Next slide is just a thank you. And my colleague Carol Archibald will continue the presentation.
Thank you. Next is Carol Archibald, followed by Susie Whitelaw, and then Carol Toy. Carol Archibald. Carol, you're already in as a panelist. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Sorry. Okay, can you put the first slide up, please?
Go ahead. Your slides are up.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this is the same topic, spraying chemicals in La Jolla Bluffs to reduce the odor. The city sprayed chemicals in the past without identifying environmental conditions that factor into the smell, including air temperature, wind condition, tidal cycle, water temperature, water circulation, and sewage leaks. As marine wildlife forage in the ocean after contact, chemicals can be transferred from the treatment area into the water through fur, feathers, and feet. Lack of acknowledgement of these environmental factors indicates that the city is spraying chemicals at random, not based on scientifically measurable parameters. Next slide. Disturbing marine mammals by spraying is against Marine Mammal Protection Act. Birds are protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty and the California Fish and Game Commission Code 3503. California Coastal Act labels environmentally sensitive habitat areas, or ESHA, California Coastal Act labels environmentally sensitive habitat areas, or ESHA, as any area in which plant or animal, or animal life or their habitats are either rare or especially valuable because of their special nature or role in an ecosystem, and which could be easily disturbed or degraded by human activities. Since spraying occurs in a very small area compared to the larger areas where wildlife frequent, it makes sense that the spraying may not work. Data recorded by the biologists is subjective, with past spraying showing little to no difference in odor level before and after spraying. Frequent daily, weekly spraying adds more chemicals and more disturbances. Cost to city taxpayers for the spraying is unnecessary. As wildlife illnesses run rapid with warmer water, ocean temperatures from climate change, domoic acid in marine mammals, and Asian flu in seabirds, why risk exposing chemicals to wildlife that are already vulnerable? We strongly urge the city to take action to protect wildlife and sensitive habitats in La Jolla from the pursuit of privileged management practices at the cost of wildlife sensitive marine habitats and the model of high state marine reserve. I thank you.
Thank you. Next, Susie Whitelaw, followed by Carol Toy, and then Nathan Brenner.
Hi, Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Sabar Beach of San Clemente. Last week, OCTA, Orange County Transportation Authority, began the placement of 1,000 tons of rock on San Clemente's public beaches under an emergency CDP. We have been and will continue to closely monitor the placement of these rocks to ensure that the pre-existing revetment is only repaired and strengthened and not widened. Next slide, please. This photograph taken last week looks as though the revetment is being widened. The rocks that they're placing are whitish compared to the darker pre-existing rocks in the background to the left. Also note the fairly wide beach here. This is the result of several million dollars worth of sand that was placed on the beach by the city last year. That sand is working to protect the tracks and also provide public recreation, lateral public coastal access, and important sandy shore habitat. We want to preserve as much of that sandy beach as possible. Next slide, please.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We actually have an item related to this on the executive, on the Deputy Director's report that's going to be coming up. And which item is this?
This is Area 1.
No, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm asking. Ma'am, hold on one sec. I'm just asking, clarifying with staff, which item?
Yeah, it's Item 11. It's the Orange County Deputy Director's Report. That's what we were going to report out on the emergency permit.
Okay. So, if you can please, if we can have that person hold her comments until Item Number 11, we will bring you back to comment on the emergency permit at that time.
Okay, got it. Next will be Carol Toy, followed by Nathan Brenner, and then Robin Davidoff. Carol Toy.
Hello. I have a slides. Thank you. So, my name is Carol Toy. I'm one of three people speaking on the behalf of the Sierra Club Seal Society about the human wildlife situation at La Jolla Cove. Next slide, please. In 2022, a CDP closed the bluffs at Point La Jolla, which is a sea lion ruchery, as you can see here. The closure is working well. People watch from the wall. Rangers staff there daily with very rare incursions by the public. 20 yards away is La Jolla Cove, which we want to speak about today. This is a very small beach and a highly visited tourist hotspot. It attracts tourists from all over the world who descend on the beach to take selfies with sea lions, leading to constant disturbance and safety risk to the public. Next slide, please. The city has proposed a monitoring plan for La Jolla Cove, which was agreed by their Coastal Commission last month. The goal was to gain compliance and educate visitors to stay safe distances from sea lions. Rangers posted at Point La Jolla are to perform periodic checks at the Cove at busy times and when the tide allows. It's also stipulated that Rangers will make public announcements on a bullhorn from the top of the stairs, asking people to stay back. Lastly, Rangers are asked to create an incident report if harassment is witnessed. As you can see from the photo, next slide, please. As you can see from the photo, crowds line the stairs and the beach to get close to the animals. Next slide, please. So, we want to give you an update on the situation from last month. To all who visit the Cove, we feel that it is failing to achieve its goal. There is a lack of clarity, as the plan does not sufficiently define the methods and responsibilities for Rangers, for example, how they should move people back, how often they should interfere, and there's a general lack of training. The wording also leaves the management as discretionary. As a result, there's a lack of implementation. We rarely witness Rangers monitoring the Cove or using their bullhorns. There's still a lot of confusion on their responsibilities and a lack of training. As you can see here, the result is the recent photo with people within a few feet of the female pup. I'll hand it over to Nathan, who will show you this in a video. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Nathan Brenner, followed by Robin Davidoff and Esser Kamaglu. Nathan Brenner.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nathan Brenner here with the Sierra Club Seal Society. I'd like to play a short video related to the immediate need to manage the La Jolla Cove in advance of the sea lion pupping season. Please start the video. As you can see, there's a crisis at the La Jolla Cove, and the sea lion pupping season begins later this month. And if the Coastal Commission doesn't keep an eye on the city of San Diego, these wildlife are going to suffer tremendously. I'm going to turn it over to Robin Davidoff, the Chair of the Sierra Club Seal Society, to conclude the presentation.
Thank you. Next, Robin Davidoff.
Hello. Could you put up my slides, please?
Yes, give us a second.
Thank you. I'm Robin Davidoff, Sierra Club Seal Society Chair. The city's update to the long-term management plan stated that Rangers are to conduct periodic checks at the Cove when conditions and visitation allows. The problem, as you've just seen, is the manage-as-you-see-fit approach results in inconsistent Ranger management. Rangers are confused about how often to visit the Cove, and some continue to sit in their truck through the duration of their shift. The solution is to require Rangers to monitor the La Jolla Cove at a minimum of every 30 minutes as part of their assigned duties to monitor the Point La Jolla area as per the CDP. Next slide, please. The public announcements that are made say attention, please respect the marine life here. The National Marine Fisheries Service recommends you stay 50 yards away from seals and sea lions to avoid injury to you and the animals. But the problem with this is it's way too long, and it results in inconsistent implementation. Plus 50 yards is incomprehensible when the pocket beach is less than 100 yards wide and people are within a few feet of the sea lions. The solution is to require the city to make recorded announcements in English, Spanish, and Chinese with specific instructions, such as please stay 25 feet or three car lengths from the sea lions. Next slide, please. We need a specific process for sea lions and newborn pups that are born on the beach to keep people away. The solution is the Rangers should place A-frame signs and cones on the beach, creating a visual guideline for people to stay behind. This takes place at other beaches along the California's coastline. Pups are born starting at the late end of May, so this needs to be implemented immediately. Next slide, please. Skip that side, slide, please. Our request to the Rangers, I'm sorry, our request to the Commissioners is to update the long-term plan with specific monitoring frequency of every 30 minutes as part of the required monitoring at Point La Jolla. Increase Ranger training and make specific distance viewing announcements. Add emergency protocols to sick animals using cones and A-frame signs on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speakers will be Esser Kamaglu, Kristen Kessler, and then George Weiss. Esser Kamaglu.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Esser Kamaglu, and I speak for the more than 700 people who signed the petition at SaveHollywoodBeach.com. 700 people who have signed their names in support of what I say now. We ask you to revoke consistency determination, CD 001-24, and terminate the Hollywood Beach project. That determination authorizes glyphosate use on Hollywood Beach by the U.S. Army Corps. California lists this chemical as a human carcinogen. Its manufacturer, Bayer, has paid $10 billion to cancer victims. The Wall Street Journal reported that there are an additional 67,000 cancer cases pending. One month ago, the CEO said they may stop making glyphosate within months. Peer-reviewed scientific research has found glyphosate use linked to the following diseases in humans: non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, breast cancer, multiple myeloma, endocrine disruption, Parkinson's disease, birth defects, heart disease, immune system dysfunction, reproductive health effects, and genotoxicity. The Commission approved the use of this chemical on Hollywood Beach. There was no analysis of the risks to human health. None. This is wrong. Over 700 people have signed a petition objecting to this. We have not received any response. Please do not ignore us. Please listen to us. Please cancel this project. The petition for your review is at SaveHollywoodBeach.com. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Kristen Kessler, George Weiss, and then Peter McNamie. Kristen Kessler.
Hi, good morning. I live in Ventura, and I'm also commenting on the spraying of glyphosate at Hollywood Beach. I object to this plan that was approved by the Coastal Commission, which calls for the use of Roundup on Hollywood Beach. Other California beaches manage invasive plants with tractors that uproot weeds and volunteer hand-pull events without chemicals. We can do the same here. I urge you to terminate this project. Thank you for your time.
I'm sorry, did you hear my comment?
Okay.
Yes, we heard your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Next is George Weiss, Peter McNamie, and then Alice McNally. George Weiss, we seem to have trouble promoting you as a panelist. You should now be able to speak as an attendee.
Okay, I'm muted. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, but your audio is kind of muffled.
Okay, is that better?
Can you try speaking a little closer to the mic?
Okay, I'll raise my voice. Is that better?
That's a little better, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Coastal Commissioners, for your service to California residents and visitors. I served on the City Council from 2021 to 2024 and addressed many of the concerns regarding the Hotel Laguna, which I want to talk about. And there's just a few pictures here I want to show you. Like most residents, I supported the reopening of this historic hotel, which was built in 1930, provided it fully complies with local codes and California Coastal Commission regulations. The pictures you see were taken from 2022 to 2025 and show the beach area adjacent to the hotel and back toward beach being marked with signage or creation of features indicating it is private property for the exclusive use of the Hotel Laguna Beach Club. The hotel isn't open. This is occurring even as the hotel remains closed, and signage suggests that alcohol is being served in this designated public beach area. Hotel Laguna Management reportedly justifies this beach use as pre-existing grandfathered agreement. This situation raises several critical questions regarding the legality and oversight of this activity. One, does the hotel claimed grandfathered agreement for beach use remain legally valid today? Two, is the current use of public beach exclusive access alcohol service legal? Three, if not legal, why is the Coastal Commission permitting private use and profit on a public beach? And four, if legal, what is the area of the beach that is allowed to be used for private use? Thank you. I would last the question of that with the Commissioners and staff to get back to me, because there's a number of residents who've indicated to me during my service as City Council to what's going on and why it's continually being allowed.
Thank you. Next, Peter McNamie, Alice McNally, and Leslie Honda.
Thank you. This is Peter McNamie. I'm a resident of Fort Bragg, California. I'm here today to comment on a proposal by the city of Fort Bragg to seek an LCP grant to bring its LCP into conformance with the master development plan the city is negotiating with the Mendocino Railway in order to allow the railway to develop in the coastal zone. I ask the Commission to deny such a grant request until the railroad comes into compliance with the Coastal Act. As the Commission knows, the railway contends that the Coastal Commission's authority to apply the Coastal Act is preempted by federal law. The railway has sued the Commission to prevent the Commission from enforcing the Coastal Act. Using public funds to subsidize a revision to the LCP in order to allow a company that refuses to abide by the Coastal Act is a misuse of the public's money. Further, it is inconsistent with the Commission's local coastal program grant requirements in that the grant requirements require that grants further the public's benefit. The master development plan, which is the purpose for the LCP, is intended to benefit the railway and its development interests on the headlands in Fort Bragg, not the public's interest. And second, the grant requirements also specify that there has to be a high likelihood that the LCP will be successful, but it will not because this LCP is predicated on allowing the railway to avoid full compliance with the Coastal Act. I therefore ask that the Commission deny any such proposal that comes before it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Alice McNally, Leslie Honda, and then Diana Sandoval. Alice McNally.
Good morning. We are all in trouble, all of Southern California, due to the 1,800 tons of nuclear waste stranded 108 feet from the ocean, containing the most toxic material known to man. Climate changes here, bringing severe storms, warmer water temps, raising sea level faster than expected. It's time to protect our coastline and demand the SCE move the waste now to a higher elevation on site. Would you license it today as is, knowing that the SCE and NRC were aware of potential impacts of climate change on nuclear plants and spent fuel facilities, but chose to submit historical climate data rather than climate projections available to them during the licensing process, making it unclear whether the safety margins for the spent fuel storage facility established during the licensing period are adequate to address the risks that climate change poses? This is a call to action for the Coastal Commission to revoke Song's license, which was approved on the applicant's intentional inclusion of inaccurate or incomplete information in connection with a coastal permit application. This can be done as if the if the Coastal Commission determines a substantial issue exists, and if it finds that accurate and incomplete information would have caused the commission to require an additional or different condition or deny the application. Is an appeal necessary to get this process started? I'd like an answer on that, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Leslie Honda, followed by Diana Sandoval, and then Lydia Ponse. Uh, Leslie Honda.
Um, I have some slides.
Yes, give us a second to bring it up.
Thank you. All right, honorable coastal commissioners and the public, my name is Leslie Honda, lead ornithologist for the San Diego Bird Alliance. Collectively with the Seal Society, we're concerned about the city of San Diego spraying chemicals on the bluffs in La Jolla, north of the cove, as this may have adverse direct effects on wildlife with young and young birds and marine mammals most vulnerable, and chemicals may be transferred into the marine protected area or M P A and affect marine life. One-third of birds worldwide, including seabirds, need conservation action, according to the N A B C I twenty-twenty-five State of the Birds Report. The western gull is an orange alert tipping point species due to long-term population loss and accelerated recent declines within the past decade. Two seabirds of conservation concern, recognized by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service as of twenty-twenty-four conservation priorities, have colonies in La Jolla dating back to the nineteen thirties. These play a critical role to the local and worldwide population as the range of both species are restricted to the Pacific coast. La Jolla is the only mainland colony in Southern California for branch cormorant and for heavily managed western gull where nests are removed around San Diego Bay. La Jolla is one of the natural areas in the county where they nest. The M P A hosts a biodiversity of marine life, including geographically restricted garibaldi, our state fish, critically endangered giant sea bass, endangered black abalone, and endangered white abalone. Currently, seabirds are vulnerable to harmful algal blooms and avian flu or H P A I, which has already affected a large number of seabirds worldwide. Spraying by the city of San Diego places additional unneeded stress on the marine life that the state is actively trying to conserve in this M P A. As the marine mammals and seabirds belong to the marine ecosystem and inhabit the M P A, in absence of the San Diego Regional Quality Water Board giving up oversight on this issue, we strongly urge the commission to protect the wildlife. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Diana Sandoval and Lydia Ponse, and then, uh, we have a few people who may have signed up for items on the agenda, but I'll call them just to make sure. Uh, Lydia Pon- uh, Diana Sandoval.
Hi there, I have a presentation.
All right, we're bringing it up.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Diana Sandoval, and this is my sixth time discussing the blocked public equestrian hiking trail at thirty-two fifteen-foot Hill Road Carpinteria. Last month, Director Kate Hucklebridge assured us a substantive update of this meeting regarding this public trail. I look forward to receiving that update as the commission's previous responses of we're working on it does not suffice. To recap, this public trail, which should be accessible to the public, has gone unrecorded and blocked for years. Despite this clear violation, Santa Barbara County has known about it for about twelve months, and the commission's Ventura office has known about it for eleven months, but the issue remains. The public trail is unrecorded and blocked. The fact is, a fifteen-foot public equestrian and hiking trail easement was required to be recorded prior to land use clearance, yet this condition was not met, but the permits were unlawfully issued, violating the Coastal Act and the permit conditions set forth in several C D Ps. Slide, please. Since the trail has gone unrecorded, the commission has the opportunity to require the county to immediately open a southern entrance via Sarapola Drive, a public street. This would allow immediate public-to-public access once recorded. Slide, please. Santa Barbara County is using a one-foot buffer, again, one foot at Sarapola Drive, which is owned by the same property owner, as an excuse to deny the southern entrance. As we see in this grant deed, the one-foot buffer is part of the same deed and should not be used as an excuse. For the past eight months, I publicly urge this commission to ensure the public trail is immediately recorded and open. To date, no substantial response has been provided to me or the public by the commission other than we're working on it. We deserve better. A public-to-public connection is available now. If the commission does not act now, I fear the public will never enjoy this hiking and equestrian trail as Santa Barbara County has a history of unlawfully exempting this property from the Coastal Act. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Lydia Ponse.
Good morning, relatives. Lydia Ponse, Mayo and Quechua, uh, residing in Sagana, also infamously known as Venice. The Safe Coastal Developers, the five oh one C four and five oh one C three, had a celebration at Baja Cantina, and I and my friend, uh, direct action dysfunction to remind them that the Dell is still in litigation as they were celebrating some kind of win. I don't know what kind of win they had. But the Erasure of Mellow Act, watered down or not, never enforced mellow at all. Here we are, twenty twenty-five, Venice suffers, the delusional colonizers, the gentrifiers, who have belief that they have this hierarchical superiority, and they lie. They lie and continue to say that the Dell is dead in the water. The Dell project is still in litigation, and, um, you know, I face fast made a hundred and twenty-five enemies at that function. I remain, uh, with love, always speaking about Venice, that Venice is for everyone. But the mellow, original mellow needs to be go back to the, uh, California Coastal Commission, if that's possible. We do not have Tracy Park's support. She definitely put a kibosh in it. The, uh, lead organizers for this function admitted it. I have it on tape. And the tape is kind of funny because they had a big guy block me, but I continued to video record over his shoulder. Since we do not have Tracy Park's support, and she could be heard saying, "These are my people. These are my people," who are predominantly white and from the neighborhood. We, the black and brown indigenous in Venice, do not feel or have her support on many things. There are many people suffering and falling through the cracks regarding Lhasa and the breakup and the billions of dollars missing. The Canal Association does not rule and reign our Venice, our coast. We are here to make sure that the Dell wins and the Dell will be struck constructed and that we serve the population of people who have been pushed out and they have a right to return since they didn't know their rental rights and they didn't know their homeowner rights. I thank you for your time, and, uh, any way we can look work together to make that Mellow Act return to your hands and to the power of enforcement as it needs to be. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next few speakers, uh, indicated that their topic might be related to an item on the agenda. I'm going to allow you to speak. Uh, if you are speaking on an item related to the agenda, we ask that you withhold your comment until that item opens. So, uh, Chris Duncan, I'm allowing you to unmute. Uh, if your comment is not related to the item on the agenda, please go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Do the video here. Anyway, uh, all right, what's going on? Yeah, my 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 item is not related to any specific agenda item. Uh, Chris Duncan here, former mayor of San Clemente, the home of the twenty-twenty-eight Olympic surfing, and also a special advisor to Save Our Beaches San Clemente. So I'm just talking generally about the Orange County Transportation Authority's, uh, promise, really using taxpayer dollars to do a full-scale coastal rail resiliency study, including all all methods that might be used to preserve beaches, right, as a general prospect. There were all kinds of listening sessions, and by the way, what's up, Paloma? Uh, there are all kinds of listening sessions. The public participated. A lot of tax money was spent. Uh, we thought we were going to get a scientific, uh, analysis study that would really review what is the best way to protect the rail and what's the best way to protect the coast, right? Is it hard structures? Is it sand? Is it other things? Let's get to the bottom of this using science as our guide. Uh, I understand that the O C T A has paused that study and it really seems, uh, like they're putting the cart before the horse and just moving ahead with with the rocking as the the primary way to protect the rail line. Uh, and, you know, I I think that's a disservice to our taxpayers who paid paid for a full-scale study, and we want to see the science behind that, right, and and the cost associated with each. So I hope that the commission will encourage the O C T A to not put the cart before the horse, not use window dressing, but actually do the study that they promised taxpayers. Um, and really, in any, uh, in any permitting issue that comes up with the O C T A that that this comes up as as a promise that they made to us, uh, that we want to see fulfilled. And I think as California taxpayers, we deserve to to know what is that very best way to protect our coast, uh, over time. So thank you so much for your time and, uh, and all your good work there. And again, what's up, Paloma? I'll see you later.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, next is, uh, Wendy Morris. Wendy Morris, you should be able to unmute now. And please keep your comments not related to an item on the agenda.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Wendy Morris. I am a resident of San Clemente and a member of, uh, Save Our Beaches San Clemente. And I'd like to voice my strong opposition to the proposed armory of San Clemente State Beach by the Orange County Transportation Authority.
Ma'am.
Beach sand erosion.
That's okay.
It's not. It's not. I don't think they've got a item on the agenda yet there. My understanding. I'm I'm just talking about riprap being placed on the beaches all over.
Go ahead with your comments.
Thank you. Um. Okay, I am, um. Beach erosion is a longstanding problem and hasn't pushed off and ignored. It needs to be addressed such as such. The problem has been getting worse over the years, and O C T A has aggravated the situation by putting rocks out, but they should be putting sand out. The riprap only covers up the sand and makes the beach erosion erode faster. The beach belongs to all the people. Placing riprap on the beach destroys the beach. Has the previous placement of riprap stopped the erosion problem? No. And will placing more riprap on the beach solve the problem? No. It will only take away the beach we have left by covering it with more rocks, and it will never be accessible to people again. The rocks never get, uh, removed or replaced with sand. That's something that doesn't happen. Uh, placing rocks is not a solution. The solution is placing sand. And I want to thank the California Coastal Commission for protecting the public access to our incredibly beautiful sandy beaches. Allowing a non-emergency destroy our sandy beaches should not ever be allowed. Put some sand on the beach, not rocks. And I thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, our last one that we're unsure about is, uh, Michael Woscheck. Uh, Michael Woscheck. You should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hello, um, I'm in support of banning the Long Beach fireworks show. It does more harm than good, and we need to stop it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we have three other names that we're unable to find. I'm going to lower all attendees' hands, and if I call your name, uh, please raise your hand. Uh, Mila Salahoudin Alden, John Dow, and Cindy Feltes. Again, that's Mila Salahoudin Alden, John Dow, Cindy Feltes. If you've heard your name, please raise your hand. If you're on a phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star six, I believe. Uh, star nine. All right, I'm seeing no hands raised. Uh, Chair Cummings.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I'd like to bring it back to the commission to see if there's any questions or comments for staff regarding comments that were made during general public comment, and I'll start with Commissioner O'Malley.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I'll be brief, and I have just one quick statement and perhaps a question. I want to thank the folks from the, uh, S D Seal Society for coming up and and sort of conveying their concerns. I live about five miles from the coast, and I think the the closure of Point Loma has worked extremely well compared to how it used to be. And, um, but the issue has kind of just shifted, you know, a hundred or two hundred feet over to the cove. And while I certainly would never advocate for closing the cove, um, I wondered, um, perhaps, this is just a question is, uh, how much of sort of the, what's what's going on in the cove and the rangers, um, was was intended to be an iterative process? And I guess most frankly, um, what authority, if any, do we have to sort of implement some of the suggestions by the the Seal Society? Now, I'll just only, I'll lastly say that there's a webcam twenty-four seven that focuses on, um, the the cove, and I won't say which hotel because I don't want to necessarily drive, uh, you know, any any people towards that, but I would just say that almost any time of day you can look on that, then you're going to see people within three, five feet of 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 the 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 sea lines over there. So, um, that that's thanks for your time, and that's my my question.
Uh, thank you through the chair. So last month, at the last hearing, we spoke a little bit about, um, the the history in terms of the commission's action related to Point La Jolla and the fact that under that permit, there is a long-term management plan requirement. And, uh, what the city did was expand, uh, their long-term management plan to include some activities at the cove as well, um, in terms of their their park ranger, uh, in terms of announcements that are being made to the public when you see those kinds of things happening. Um, and so that came to us basically as an executive director sign-off, which which we've given at this point, and the city is now in the process of implementing that plan. So it it's it's a recent, um, change, and I think it takes some time, perhaps, for some of those, uh, things to take effect. But like you said, it is an iterative, um, process here. If those management activities aren't working, then that's something the city needs to consider and, uh, bring those back to us with any further changes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners on, uh, Commissioner Nala?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, flag the work done by O C T A that's happening now and just make sure that I'm assuming that our enforcement division is making clear that that is reinforcing existing, the existing alignment and not expanding consistent with the permit.
Thanks, Commissioner Nala. We will be doing and, uh, reporting out on the emergency permit during, um, the D D R for Orange County. So we'll have a more fulsome discussion at that point.
Thank you.
Commissioner Esqualda.
Thank you, Chair. Just, uh, a a quick question. Well, I, uh, if staff can make any comments about the Hollywood Beach in Oxnard situation, I think that was, there were a lot of public comments about that, and it sounds very concerning.
Yes, thank you through the chair. Um, we are becoming aware of the situation pretty, um, it's a pretty recent. Uh, we we have gotten some public comments, um, from some of the folks, I think, that came for a public comment today. Uh, we're aware of the situation. We've reached out to the Corps. This does relate to, uh, C D that this commission concurred with last year. I think it was May of last year, uh, related to Dune Restoration Project. So we are in the process of trying to get our hands wrapped around it. We understand the Corps has been meeting with the community to try to explain the project and understand their concerns, and we're going to continue to be, you know, work with the Corps to understand kind of how they're responding or or what what the to get our, um, hands fully wrapped around the issue as well. So I don't have any other specific updates, but we will let you know, um, if there's more to learn next next month.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Uh, we have Commissioner Gary on on.
Oh, Commissioner Gary. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just a quick question about the Laguna Beach questions related to, um, the beach use and what appears to be or what they're talking about, the grandfathered in permitted use.
So that is the first, um, that I've heard of that particular issue. So I think at this point, we'll just say we're going to look into it. Um, I our enforcement staff, uh, is always watching our public comments, so, um, we will we'll look into it.
Could I just add on to that is if you uh, look on Google, that hotel, it advertises that it has a private beach.
I think that's been raised to us in the past, and I thought it was addressed, but apparently it is not, and yeah, uh, what they're doing there is very interesting. So I would love to see us look further into it and hopefully hear back from what's going on from the enforcement team. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. Through the chair, I'd like to turn it over to Andrew Willis, who can respond a little more directly.
Thanks, Kate. Good morning, commissioners. Right, this is this is an activity at Hotel Laguna. We've sent, uh, a few, uh, letters to the hotel regarding uh, exclusion of public access at at the beach there, and we we've gotten some recent reports. So we're going to have to look at, you know, our options to to address this. It's something that we've been working on, trying to resolve. And now it looks like, uh, it's something we we still need to, we still need to work on, and we will be doing that. We'll be sending out correspondence to Hotel Laguna, uh, as soon as possible, uh, maybe as soon as this week, and we'll reach out to Mr. Wise and let him know, uh, you know. And we'll reach out to Mr. Wise and let him know, uh, you know, where, where we are on that issue.
Thank you.
Alright, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I just have a, um, kind of question comment, and this is regarding the, um, sea lion harassment. For context, I was a fisheries observer for NOAA. And, um, the Marine Mammal Protection Act is actually enforced by the NOAA Fisheries Division. And so they have a law enforcement division, um, that actually acts to enforce these laws. And so, you know, the types of behavior that we're seeing in those videos actually constitutes as harassment. And through NOAA, the fines actually can be up to $36,498, one year in prison plus criminal fines. And so for folks who brought that up, if they're still out there, the Fishers Enforcement has a hotline that people can call if they witness harassment. And the number's 1-800-853-1964. Again, 1-800-853-1964. So I guess the question I have around this is, you know, what role, I guess, is the Commission playing in conjunction with conversations with NOAA and the city? I mean, are those discussions happening because it's not necessarily our role to, um, enforce what's happening there? But there may be opportunities working with NOAA to be able to flag this to them so that they can, whether it's giving authority to the Rangers to impose fines, but it seems like there may be an opportunity for us to work together to kind of deter this behavior. And so I'm wondering if staff can comment on that.
Um, I'll take a first stab and then Carl, please, um, add anything if I miss it. My understanding, we have reached out to NOAA, uh, specifically on this issue. The management plan does include reporting to NOAA about, um, with data and information that the city collects. Um, I will say it's been hard to get in some active engagement, um, from NOAA on this issue in the past. And I suspect that will be even more difficult now. But yes, you're right, and, and we have, um, sought their engagement and active participation, and it's just been, it's been a challenge.
Thanks. Alright, with that, we will close general public comment, and we will move on to the Chair's report. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is welcome Commissioner Dennis Redoni. He is the alternate for, uh, North Coast, North Central Coast Commissioner Ariel Kelly. And I'd just like to, um, see if he had a few, uh, things to say as we welcome you to the Commission.
Now, thank you very much for the warm welcome. It's really a pleasure to be here, longtime coastal resident. And it's always, uh, particularly interesting to see the activity of this Commission and to help us move forward with a lot of decisions that need to be made. And I certainly am interested in today's agenda and future agendas and look forward to serving whenever I can. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Also, um, May, oops, sorry. May is Staff Appreciation Month, and I wanted to just, um, make a few, make a statement, um, as Chair, and if you all will just be patient with me for a sec while I bring up, uh, the letter. Alright, so I wanted to take a moment to express my deep appreciation, uh, for our staff's unwavering dedication and hard work in these challenging times. Everyday coastal Commission staff navigate complex issues across multiple agencies and decision-makers, ensuring that our coast remains a public treasure for future generations. Your expertise and collaboration are essential in advancing policies that balance environmental protection with public access, community needs, and climate resilience. The work that you all do to, to review and provide guidance on sea level rise adaptation plans, enforce coastal act violations, as well as your commitment to protecting and promoting affordable coastal lodging opportunities and coastal access, exemplify the vital role you play in preserving California's coastline. Your ability to work through these difficult issues with integrity and professionalism is truly commendable. Please know that your work does not go unnoticed. As federal and state forces attempt to undermine the critical work we do to protect California's coastal resources and promote equitable access to the coast, your resilience and commitment to our mission remains steadfast and will be appreciated, not just now, but for, for generations to come. The Coastal Commission and indeed the people of California, the plants and wildlife, and all those who visit and appreciate the coast rely on your dedication, expertise, and passion to protect and preserve one of the most beautiful coastlines in the world. Thank you for everything that you do to preserve and protect our coast.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And I would also, I'll, I'll kind of kick off, if it's alright with you Chair, with my ED report. A thank you for those incredible comments and kind words. It's actually Public Service Recognition Week, and so I would just like to turn that thank you back to you all and, and recognize and acknowledge the hard work that we're all doing here together. We, we are all working in incredible service to our coast and ensuring that all people have access to our beautiful coastline, and we work as a team, and we couldn't do it, um, by ourselves. And, and we are grateful to have you all as our fearless leaders and, um, and again, as partners in working, uh, to do the work that we all do. So please, I would like to turn and extend the thank you to you all, um, for your hard work, um, in service of our coast. Um, and I guess just a, a thought, and I mentioned this to staff earlier this week, uh, just, you know, in, in light and in celebration of Public Service Recognition Week, I encourage you all to just take a moment and reflect on your own public service and why that's important to you. Talk to your colleagues about it. And then please take a moment. We're in a beautiful location right on the coast. Take a walk, get outside, and go enjoy the fruits of your labor. Um, we, we all work really hard. Uh, these jobs can be hard, and it's important to remember why we do them, uh, why it's important. And so, um, I say it to all the staff and, um, all of you, let's, um, enjoy, uh, this, this week together and, um, celebrate our work, again, in service of our coast. So, um, moving on, uh, I have, um, a couple of things to report to you. My written report, as always, is available online, but I'll go through a couple of items. Uh, first, this month I approved, um, a grand of about $59,000 for the City of San Clemente to complete a beach attendance study and to incorporate the, those findings into the city's LCP. The project's objective is to monitor hourly beach attendance at specific beach sites using camera and cellphone data to assess visitor sheds, beach visitation patterns, and surf activity, and to complete an economic analysis of beach visitation. The study will also consider environmental justice, as well as sea level rise and adaptation pathways based on the carrying capacity of San Clemente's beaches. Next, uh, last Friday on April 25th, Commission staff participated in a workshop with Caltrans District 4 engineers and planners. The workshop was second in a series developed by the Commission's transportation and engineering staff in conjunction with Point Blue Conservation Science, NOAA, and USGS, funded by the NOAA Effects from Sea Level Rise Grant Program. The goal of the workshop was to advance knowledge of the opportunities and challenges of applying nature-based solutions to coastal engineering problems, and to increase the understanding and application of nature-based solutions within Caltrans. The workshop was right here in Princeton, where attendees heard from the engineers and scientists who work on the Surfers Beach Sand Restoration Project, permitted, uh, permitted by this Commission in 2023, uh, to think about opportunities to address the long-term adaptation challenges along Highway 1. Commission staff are proud to have helped plan the workshop and look forward to continued coordination with our state and federal partners on nature-based adaptation strategies. Next, uh, on April 11th, Commission staff attended the 2025 Core to Career Fair. And there's a great picture in the ED report online, uh, which was held in Long Beach. Core to Career is an initiative under Governor Newsom's broader strategy to create a California for All, furthering economic and workforce development. At the fair, hundreds of talented and diverse California Service Corps alumni are connected to nonprofit, business, and public, public agency employers, which gladly included the Coastal Commission this year. Next, I have a couple of announcements from Public Ed. Um, the Public Ed Unit recently announced this year's Coastal Art and Poetry Contest results. We had more than 2,200 entries from students across California, and 10 winners and 40 honorable mentions were selected. The recognized artwork and poetry will go on to be part of a traveling exhibit for the remainder of the year, starting at the Robert J. Lago Maries, oh geez, Lago, uh, Marcino. Sorry, I'm sure I butchered that name. Please forgive me. Uh, Visitor Center at the Channel Islands National Park in Ventura during May and June. Contest results and information about the traveling exhibit can be found on our webpage. And I do encourage you to go check those, um, the winners and the different entries. Um, I, if you've ever been in our Coastal Commission offices, you'll often see artwork posted up around, um, our offices. It's sort of a constant, um, reminder to us about the importance of education and bringing our youth into coastal protection. California State Parks and the Coastal Commission, um, Boating Clean and Green Program released a new podcast episode, so please check that out. It's linked on our website. And on April 22nd, the Public Education Team partnered with Justice Outside to provide a virtual workshop on equity-centered curriculum and program development to Whaletail grantees. 24 participants from 19 organizations explored how to mitigate biases and moved toward equity and inclusion in program delivery. This was the first of five free Justice Outside trainings for Whaletail grantees centered on equity in programming and organization management. Upcoming training topics include program evaluation, justice-centered marketing, and human-centered storytelling. Jessica Lee, our Whaletail Grants and Education Programs Analyst, uh, will support the Empower Her Institute's youth philanthropy projects by serving as a panelist and a youth mentor for members of their youth advisory board. These middle and high school girls will be leading a project to offer mini grants to youth-serving organizations across Los Angeles County. Empower Her is a current Whaletail grant recipient, but this philanthropy project is funded by the Free to See Cox Foundation. So for the next item, I would like to turn it over to Lauren Garsky Garcia, a supervisor on our ecology team, to introduce our visitors.
Thank you, Kate. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. We'd like to start by offering context for this effort. This is a project that is an outgrowth of ongoing conversations at the agency, primarily thinking about the allocation of ecological restoration efforts relative to disadvantaged communities, and how through the Commission's work, we may be able to leverage compensatory mitigation efforts and achieve outcomes that also benefit marginalized, underserved, and vulnerable communities. When an opportunity arose to collaborate with the UC Davis Graduate Program last fall, we recognized it as a chance to delve into these ideas and identify new ways to support environmental justice through the Commission's work. We asked, if habitat mitigation needs to occur off-site for a permitted project, how can we guide that in a way that benefits not only ecosystems, but also delivers ecosystem services and supports environmental justice goals? Today, we'd like to welcome our student team, who's been mentored by an interdisciplinary group of Commission staff. Excuse me. They will provide an update on their work to extend the foundations from which we will continue to explore such important questions. Before graduating next month, they will provide us with a collection of reports based upon their research. And with that, it is my pleasure to introduce our three students attending in person today, Nathan Ling, Maya Williard, and Jofia Adamkovic Larson. And then joining us online are their partners, Maya Lewis Burgess and Sean Marks. Students, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Lauren.
Yes, we have your slides.
Hello, everyone. We are the UC Davis team that have been working on this project for the past several months. Could you go to the next slide, please? Just to put some faces to a name, my name's Nate. This is Jofia, and that's Maya W., and we are joined today on Zoom by Sean and Maya B. Next slide, please. And we'll get right into it.
Our project combines three separate work streams to develop an analytical foundation for investigating the connection between ecological restoration projects and the agency's environmental justice goals. In particular, we focus on the distribution of habitat mitigation projects required to compensate for impact to environmentally sensitive habitat areas, floodlands, and marine resources. Each work stream aims to inform a specific question at the core of our research. Some of the key questions we are covering involves understanding how to facilitate equitable access and ecosystem services, value of enhanced access to ecosystems, and finding spatial trends from past restoration efforts with relation to disadvantaged community locations. Each of these work streams has an equity and inclusion component, which feeds into the project's overarching goal of identifying nexus with ecological restoration. This is done through policy analysis, literature review, conversations with relevant EJ organizations, case studies, and a geospatial analysis of past permission permits. Each group will now provide further details on the analysis being done and what we hope to deliver at the conclusion of our project. Next slide, please.
For more than 40 years, the Coastal Commission has worked to uphold the principles of the Coastal Act, a statute grounded in public inclusion and safety. Yet despite numerous victories, the statute's vision of coastal protection and access for all people has not been fully realized. Historically, equal coastal access has been prevented by housing covetants, redlining, and government structures of land. In response, there have been decades of advocacy, and in 2016, the Commission gained the authority to consider environmental justice in its decision-making. The Commission later went on to adopt its environmental justice policy and to create an agency definition for environmental justice. Currently, it is understood to include equitable access to healthy ecosystems, as well as the process of land use decision-making. This project seeks to build on the Commission's commitment to equity by exploring the intersection of compensatory mitigation with environmental justice, and by calling attention to opportunities where the agency's work might better support underserved communities across the coast. Next slide. The policy analysis piece of this project focuses on Chapter 3 of the Coastal Act, or rather, the core policies used for permit analysis and the requirement of compensatory mitigation. So far, we have reviewed policies with attention to three aspects: ecosystem functions and values, ecosystem services, and environmental justice implications. Ecosystem functions and values are the components, interactions, and processes of ecosystem independent of people. Ecosystem services are defined in terms of how people derive benefits from ecosystems, whether directly or indirectly. For example, services may include pollination of crops, recreational opportunities, or water purification. At times, functions, values, and services overlap within a given policy, but compensatory mitigation requirements are most often associated with impacts to functions and values. This project is focused on interpreting where these aspects overlap within individual policies, so mitigation requirements intended to compensate for habitat loss might be leveraged to provide further benefits, including benefits to underserved communities. For example, on the slides, there is an excerpt of the Coastal Act. In it, the phrases biological productivity and optimum populations are broadly interpreted to protect marine resources and largely reflect ecosystem functions and values. However, the protection of human health is clearly an ecosystem service that depends on coastal water quality. Add a nexus with environmental justice. In our analysis, we might consider how this section could apply to something like an ocean outfall and its disproportionate water pollution impact on marine resources or specific communities. We could then consider how compensatory mitigation might be used to address both of these problems. Ultimately, this kind of analysis of the Coastal Act, combined with a literature review of environmental justice and coastal resource management, will be used to write a summary paper of our findings. Next slide.
In the valuation work stream, we are working with the research question, how might environmental justice communities value enhanced access to resort ecosystems? And are there particular priorities or other criterias that should be considered? In this section, we are employing two methodologies: conversations with EJ organizations and literature reviews. These conversations have been used to guide our research from on-the-ground community perspectives through California's coastal zone, whereas the literature review is tied to the academic aspects of the research and will help draw conclusions and recommendations. Some of our current findings include the identification that substance is a value that restored ecosystems and help enhance for a community's economy and overall provision. This is particularly important since natural resource-dependent areas are often vulnerable to climate impacts and a general lack of resources. We are continuing to look at other values such as cultural, health, and land protection and tribal values as well. Upon completion, we hope that this can help support Upon completion, we hope that this can help support the California Coastal Commission in framing the value of ecological restoration work and opportunistically applying compensatory mitigation requirements for habitats to also benefit EJ communities in the future. Next slide, please.
To enter the question of how past restoration efforts have been allocated relative to disadvantaged communities, we initially relied on a research database developed by previous graduate student interns who investigated past commission decisions concerning compensatory mitigation for habitat from 2010 through 2018. Branching off from this, we focused on the number of cases flagged as having used off-site mitigation and identified where these permitted projects impacted and mitigated for habit spatially from 2019 to 2024. To do this, we reviewed associated staff reports and exhibits using keyword searches to identify spatially referenced locations as points. We mapped both permitted project locations and their associated off-site mitigation as pairs of points due to the variety of project types and locations. In total, we had 52 records with specific coordinates for permitted project locations and their associated off-site mitigation. Using QGIS, we plotted each pair of points with CalEnviron Screen 4.0 to evaluate spatial relationships each site has with respect to various dimensions of environmental justice. Distances between projects and regional patterns of mitigation sites were also calculated. While there are several different ways to assess EJ or disadvantaged communities, CalEnviron Screen provides the most comprehensive assessment of the pollution burden or level of negative impacts that communities face. We used CalEnviron Screen's cumulative impact score where both project and off-site mitigation points were found and compared the two scores. On the map, points overlap census tract data shaded to represent the relative environmental burden score, with darker shades representing a higher score and therefore greater environmental impacts. We were interested in understanding whether there were differences in the average burden between the communities where a project occurred and where mitigation efforts were permitted. In other words, are off-site mitigation efforts being cited in communities with similar or higher environmental burden scores compared to the original project site? Next slide, please.
As shown by the data plotted on the left, the majority of both impacts and habitat mitigation occurred in communities with relatively low burden scores. Note that this frequency decreases with increased impacts, and that the only effort of any kind to take place in a very highly burdened community was a mitigation project. On the right, the plot shows how differences in cumulative impact scores between each impact mitigation site pair are distributed, and we can see that the differences tend to cluster around zero, meaning that impact and mitigation sites tend to fall within areas of similar burden overall. Running a simple statistical test verifies this, as we cannot conclude that there are any significant differences between impacted and mitigation site pairs with regards to cumulative impact scores. Now, while it may be too early to draw conclusions, the data so far suggests that project and off-site mitigation appear to occur in communities of like burden and vulnerability. We hope that this project can serve as a foundation for understanding and identifying ways to guide mitigation efforts, when appropriate, to areas where benefits can support underserved communities better. Our next step in this project is to identify if there are patterns that can be described by ecosystem, human connection, or other variables. Next slide, please. And that concludes our overview of the work that we have been able to accomplish thus far. We'd like to give special thanks to the Coastal Commission staff for supporting and guiding our project over the last several months, as well as the previous work of other graduate student interns that we were able to build our project off of. Thank you all for listening, and we'll take time for any questions.
Very great work. Thank you all so much for your hard work on this. I'll ask, are there any commissioners who have any questions or comments? Is your not?
Well, I just wanted to commend the team for a really thorough presentation, and I really appreciate it. I just wondered, I was wondering how useful you found the California EnviroScreen to be in your analysis, and is that something that's consistently evolving at the state level, or how does that fit into your analysis?
Yeah, as far as overlaying different dimensions of environmental justice, we felt that CalEnviron Screen provided the most indicators of pollution burden and population vulnerability, and that this provides a comprehensive assessment of EJ communities. But to your point, it's obviously evolving. We're understanding new ways to interpret data every day, and so while this was the best available science that we had at the moment, in the future, there might be better ways to look at EJ communities and better ways to disentangle the spatial relationships that these project sites have with those communities.
Yeah, thank you, because I think California is really an innovator of establishing the California EnviroScreen, and I think as we learn, as we go along, to have it be as useful as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, thank you for all your work, and I guess my question is, like, how can we get access to your final report? I'd really like to dive in a little bit deeper in this, but I really appreciate this presentation.
You'd probably have to go through Lauren, but we're more than happy to share any information or reports that we produce. But yeah, if that's okay with Lauren, then...
Yeah, absolutely, yes. When we have final copies of everything, we're absolutely happy to provide that to the commission.
That'd be great, yeah. Pusher Escalante.
One of my, thank you so much for that report, guys, and for being interested in this and diving in. I think for, you know, I started my career in academia, so I know how sort of we all like to get into the weeds, and what I would advise your team, especially since you're in Davis, and you'll be kind of continuing to work in the space of policy, is to prepare sort of, you know, a two-minute elevator pitch of what the recommendations are for anybody who you come across, whether it's advocates, activists, legislators, decision-makers, regulator, whoever it is. Just because, kind of like getting that message, that constant drumbeat of, you know, how we need to kind of incorporate this thinking in everything that we do, is just, it's necessary. You kind of have to constantly be pounding it in, and I think a two-minute, you know, elevator pitch of what the recommendations are, I think would be incredibly helpful to all of us, so I encourage that. Thank you, guys. Keep it up.
Thank you for the feedback. We'll definitely get that to you.
All right. Thank you again, and with that, we're going to move on.
Actually, I'm not quite done.
Or actually, no, yeah, you can continue. Yeah, we'll move on to continue the executive director's report.
Thank you. We really appreciate the presentation today, and as Lauren said, we will provide, once we get final reports, everything, we're happy to provide that to the commission. Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. So the last thing I wanted to go over my ED report today is a couple of retirements to talk about. So the first is Tom Lester. Tom Lester served for over 24 years as a senior environmental scientist in the commission's Energy, Ocean Resources, and Federal Consistency Division. During his time at the commission, Tom consistently took on and then became the commission's expert on some of the most controversial and important projects and topics that the commission has faced, including desalination, nuclear waste storage, and the siting and operation of coastal power plants. Allison Detmer, who managed the energy division for a number of years, used to call Tom the commission's Department of Water and Power. As a commission scientist, Tom also worked to effectively protect some of the coast's least appreciated and most fundamentally important organisms. He developed expertise in plankton, microscopic plants, larvae, and eggs that are the source of marine productivity, and without which the more charismatic species and habitats we all know and love would not exist. His insight into the importance of plankton as the base of the marine food chain developed into a widely recognized and valued expertise on the environmental impacts of industrial seawater use, including key contributions to the science of calculating and mitigating for those impacts. This work has doubtless led to a legacy of protection that includes billions of individual marine organisms and hundreds of acres of marine habitat. Throughout his career, Tom also went above and beyond his professional responsibilities to represent and passionately advocate for his environmental scientists' colleagues across the state when the situation called for it, and mentored countless staff over the years. The list of those he helped train and guide includes several members of commission's executive and management teams, and he has been key to their development and success at this agency, both by generously sharing his knowledge and by modeling the professional scientific excellence and analytical rigor that makes a successful commission staff environmental scientist. Tom's tireless, head-down, no fuss, yet good-humored approach to his work and his consistent level of achievement have always been deeply appreciated. He is the epitome of a dedicated public servant, doing his job outside of the spotlight with passion and integrity, never balking at putting in long hours, and constantly maintaining the highest scientific standards. On a personal note, I am one of those lucky individuals who had the privilege of working beside Tom in the energy unit, and I count him as one of my mentors. For most of my career in that unit, Tom and I shared a cube wall. He was the first person I talked to every day, and the person I always went to when I had questions about the Coastal Act, agency practice and policy, where is the bathroom, or pretty much anything else. And he was unfailingly patient and generous with his time. He also kept things interesting with his dry humor, punk rock attitude, and creative approaches to work and to life. I will miss him very much. This agency will miss him, and please join me in thanking Tom for his decades of service to this agency and wishing him many, many happy years of retirement. And hopefully, Tom, you're watching right now. And then finally today, it is time to celebrate one of our longest-serving commissioners. Commissioner Yuranga will be stepping down after serving on this commission for an incredible Commissioner Yuranga was appointed to the commission in March of 2015 by the Senate Rules Committee, led at the time by Senator Kevin DeLeon. And in his time at the commission, Commissioner Yuranga has worked tirelessly to protect and expand public access to our coast and to protect our state's beaches and coastal habitats. He has also been a champion for environmental justice, and especially for farm workers. And we will always think of Commissioner Yuranga as a tireless and proud champion for his community of Long Beach. In addition to supporting the city from the dais, he really rolled out the red carpet for us every time we were in his city. I specifically remember, I think it was back in 2020, when we met in Long Beach for Valentine's Day, and Commissioner Yuranga had roses for all of us. It is small touches like that, and of course, the best mustache in California, that made an impression on all of us and that we will all carry with us. Commissioner Yuranga, you have become part of our coastal family, and we have seen each other through good times and through hard times. And on behalf of staff, I would like to thank you for your incredible service to this agency and to our coast as a whole. We wish you the very best on your next adventure, and hope you will look in on us from time to time, especially when we're in your hometown. Thank you.
If I can, Commissioner Cummings, can I say a few words? Well, I thought about this day for the past, I guess, year or so, and I was always contemplating, what am I going to say? So I figured I'll write it down, so I can remember. And before you know it, it was almost a novel. And that's too long, let me cut it short. And for me, the best way it's always worked is to speak from the heart, because when you speak from the heart, that's when your mess comes out, because your feelings come out. And I can say that from the very beginning, when I first started on this commission, I was very impressed with the staff, with the commission, the members, and with the people who come out here every meeting and make their comments about important issues regarding the coast. And I always saw my job as not being a quasi-judge on this commission, but a good listener. Because of my job, I need to listen. Not necessarily make opinions or give opinions, but to weigh the rights and the wrongs, the positives and negatives of what is being presented. And of course, the issues themselves, the obigets, the appellants, you all have important things to say, so that's why it's important for me to listen to what you have to say. And I hope that I was able to show that and maintain that throughout my tenure as a commissioner. For me, I see this as a benchmark in my career, obviously. For me, here, 10 out of a possible 12, given the term limits, as an elected official, to be here that long, I think is an indication of the commitment that the state had and the trust it had in me in continuing to serve so long. So I thank the Rules Committee, I thank the Senate Pro Tem, both of them, not only Kevin DeLeon, but Tony Atkins as well, who's under her watch that I had my second term appointed. And I leave here sort of mellow swing, because I love this commission, I love coming here once a month, regardless of where I was in the state. And I always have my wife with me, and my wife is always my work, her pleasure. So I be working, she be playing. She's out there right out somewhere, either shopping or eating or just enjoying the environment. And many times, I will never enjoy her, but the important we have to do here is important work that we do, and I really appreciate it. And finally, I want to thank my commissioners. These last four years especially have been especially trying for me. And you know, I had a stroke four years ago, and you guys, staff, the commission, and the audience have been so accommodating to me in my efforts as I recover. And I want to thank you so much for your patience, your tolerance, your understanding of where I came from, where I'm at, and hopefully where I end up. I'll still in Long Beach, I have another year there as an appointed official. This past year, I'm a vice mayor, so next year, maybe I can welcome you then as vice mayor to Long Beach. And I really, really so much appreciate all the work and the effort that you put in. This is one of the most active commissions that I've ever been involved with, and I got to say that this commission's, commission staff is one of the most intelligent, persuasive, as well as well-meaning commissioners, staff that I've ever come across. So my hat goes off to you guys for all the great work that you do, and it's appropriate that this week is Public Service Week, because you need acknowledgement. And I came here, and I've seen some incredible changes through not only the executive director, you're my third director in my time here at staff, seen retirements, and Tom was one of those retirements that we applaud today, and we've also seen the evolution of important policies for the commission, the environmental justice policy, Senate Prize guidelines, those are important for the commission, and I'm proud to have been part of that. I'm proud to have been part of that. So again, thank you so much, and I wish you all very well. Thank you.
I'd like to see if there's any commissioners who have any comments. Commissioner Hart.
Thanks so much. I want to just start by acknowledging the work of Tom Lester. He and I live in the same community, and it's really a pleasure to be able to call Tom and see him. When I have questions or there are times that we deal with issues that are very complicated, and I reached out to Tom on those occasions, and he takes the time and has taken the time to sit down with me in our community and explain these issues in a way that really no one else could. It's a huge, huge hole, and it will be, it's not fillable, but nevertheless, we have to continue on, and we will. And there's wonderful people on our staff and new people that will come in, but there will only be one Tom Lester, and I am just so, so appreciative of having had the benefit of his incredible mind and expertise over this time I've been on the commission and dealing with some of those very complicated issues that really it takes someone like Tom, actually, that's a stupid way to put it, it takes Tom to really explain. So I wish him all the best. I really hope I get to see you, Tom, and I'm really excited for you as you move on to this new phase. So congratulations. Roberto, there really is no way to express what an honor it has been to serve with you on this commission. I care for you so much, and it's way beyond being a fellow commissioner, with just everything that's happened during this time that you've been, it's hard to even talk about, really. But I just want to say how much I personally am going to miss you. You personally, your incredible wife, Tonya, who is just always here to support you and us, she's amazing, and just your independent thought, you always bring just your own unique perspective. And a lot of times, it's impossible to know, where is Roberto Yoranga going to come down on this? You know? But that's a wonderful thing, because it shows that you're applying your own thought process, your own reasoning and rationale to every issue that comes before us. Another thing I'm really going to miss, and I hope it's not over, is your amazing Long Beach City Council chambers and those incredible comfortable seats. That place is fantastic, and the city of Long Beach that you've contributed to. I really enjoy our meetings there, and I'm so grateful to you for facilitating that and making sure we have such a great time when we go to Long Beach. But really, Roberto, I'm just going to miss you so much. I'm just so grateful for you. So thank you very much, Chair.
Commissioner Scalante.
You know, I'm going to start resenting how much this commission makes me cry. Ugly cry in the state. So I'll try to get through it. Best wishes to Tom, of course, and enormous gratitude to him for his service to this commission. You know, it's really always hard to see our long-tenure staff leave and sort of feeling this uncertainty of how we're going to feel that institutional knowledge. So I'm sure that Tom will be receiving calls from folks in this commission for a while until we figure it out. So thank you, thank you, Tom, and the best wishes on your retirement. Roberto, so first, getting to know Long Beach through your eyes has been just one of the most priceless things on this commission, so much so that if I were ever to come back to LA, I would totally look at Long Beach. I love Long Beach, the culture, what you guys are doing with the city, how progressive it is in so many ways. So getting to know Long Beach and your work through this has been just exceptional, and I admire it so incredibly much, and I'm so glad that you will continue serving the city as vice mayor. It is definitely going to be hard not to have your very constant and calm and steady but kind presence on this commission. You know, I lost my mom, and you came back from the hospital right after that. And seeing you was almost like, I'm not sort of a religious person, but seeing you come back from that almost felt like a miracle and like a second chance to get to know you better, to appreciate you, to love you, you know? And I'm so grateful to life for that opportunity and that, you know, you're kicking ass and you're going to keep kicking butt, and it's been an honor. So I will miss you so much, but don't worry, I will come and visit you, and hopefully our friendship will move on. Olympics in Long Beach 2028. So yes, absolutely, we'll stay on it. So, much more.
Commissioner Nava.
Well, my knowledge of Commissioner Yoranga dates back long before I joined the commission. It was a figure that figured prominently in a lot of environmental controversies that I was involved in, and it was a treat to be able to join the commission and then get to know the great Roberto Yoranga personally. And I've really appreciated your warmth and calmness as well, and it's been a very, it's so great to see you healing over the last couple of years, too. I mean, you just look great, look at you right now, you look fabulous. So you're in good stead to go do great things now, and I just wanted to say how much I appreciated your welcoming and a chance to get to know you better. And Tom Lester is a legend in his own time as well. I mean, before I joined, was on the commission, I certainly interacted with him quite a bit on major issues from D cell to energy facilities. So he's, the depth of his technical expertise is really a credit to the commission and the importance that the state of California does place on protecting our coast and ocean. So thank you for that as well.
Commissioner Wilson.
Okay, a couple of things here. Tom Lester, he actually has an impact on me from much farther back, I would say, high school. When I was in high school, I lived in the hills of remote Northern California, before there was internet and, you know, most of the people I lived around didn't even have phones. We would get the signal from KHSU, Humboldt State University Radio, and there was a cadre of punk rock DJs there, of which Tom was one of them. And so, you know, I was just going to say that that was an influence on me from, as a youth, and, yeah, I'm just going to say that that was definitely would schedule my time to listen to those shows, and it influenced me to move to Arcata eventually to, well, turned out they didn't have a major in punk rock, so I had to move on from there, but that was a time and an influence that I think also, so I think that influenced his independent thinking, his very environmental streak, his hard work in that space. And so I want to thank him personally for being part of that memory that I have, and then also, I mean, the amazing work that he's done for this agency for all those years. And I want to note that there's colleagues outside this organization throughout the state of California that highly respect the work that he did or has done for the state of California, and thank him for that. And speaking of punk rock, Roberto, I mean, I want to say, like, I have had just such a wonderful time being on this commission with so many wonderful people, but Roberto really stands out. And when I say punk rock, I mean, I want to say, for one thing, Long Beach is solid. And Roberto has helped introduce me to that space as well. And I just want to say that we've had a lot of times after meetings in sort of dingy places and fun spots and with drinks and beers and all kinds of stuff. It happens, it does. And I want to say that his story and his wisdom, his independent and fierce voice for working people is something that I think is unmatched in many arenas, and especially this one. And so, thanks, man, I really, really appreciate you. You've been a brother, I really love this man. So thanks.
Commissioner Gure.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I will be brief. I want to echo what's been said about Roberto before. I really have always appreciated your independent thinking, and I remember when I first met you, we sat next to each other during lunch, and most of our commission hearings, we've sat next to each other. So I've had the wonderful opportunity to get to know you, not just as a leader, but as a human being, and I want to say how proud I am of you, Vice Mayor, proud of the work you've done in the city of Long Beach, which is beautiful, but most importantly, so proud to call you my friend. You are a wonderful human being, and I am sorely going to miss you and miss my seating buddy, but I'm hoping to see you again soon, and thank you for sharing your friendship with all of us. Te queremos mucho, Roberto.
All right, seeing all the commissioners, I just want to start by thanking Tom Lester for his 24 years of dedication and commitment to this commission. I don't really know Tom, I haven't had a chance to really get to know him, but what I do know is that, you know, especially as this relates to Public Service Week, I mean, many of us could be out there doing so many other things, working in the private sector, just making money instead of committing ourselves to really, you know, things that we value. And, you know, to have someone who's dedicated 24 years of their life to this commission, it's just so, yeah, words can't really describe, you know, how fortunate we are to have had someone in his capacity, um, applying himself to really helping us protect our coast. And so I'm just very grateful as someone who's new to the commission, but as someone who really cares about the environment, I just do want to acknowledge that commitment that Tom has made. And, you know, it's sad to see someone go, but at the same time, we're really grateful to have had him here and wish him the best in his later years. And then Commissioner Yoranga, I just want to personally thank you so much, again, in the same vein, you know, 10 years of your life you've committed to this commission, and I know you've been through a lot since you've been on this commission, and many people probably would have just walked away. But you stood strong and through your healing, committed yourself to continuing to be here as long as you could. And, you know, having people dedicate themselves for five years to something is impressive, but the fact that you've stayed here and been a champion for working people, for the coast, for your community, that dedication, I think, goes a long way, and it's something that I look up to. And, you know, I just want to also thank you for, you know, your perspective and your historical knowledge. As someone who's only been here for two and a half years, I'm still trying to learn where all the bodies are buried and what's been going on and some of the controversies, you know, that have happened in the past, and being able to talk to you at times about, you know, historically, what's underpinning some of the issues that are before us, really helps me gain some perspective. And also, you know, there are times when, you know, we may disagree on something, but I appreciate, and this is for all the commissioners, that we can disagree here and we can disagree on issues, but after that, we leave it at the table and we can walk away, and we can all be friends. And I think that's something that many decision-makers throughout the state could learn from, because I've been on other boards and been on other councils where people, you disagree on a decision, then they make it personal and they carry it with them for the rest of their lives. And I think that, you know, just being able to work with you, even through times when we might not agree, has been something that I've found, it makes me hopeful that we can all figure out ways to get along. And so it's been an honor to serve with you, and I hope to stay in touch with you moving forward, because we will be going back to Long Beach at some point, because there's more to be discovered there, and hope that we can, you know, track you down when we're back there. And so I also just want to, for the commissioners, tonight, we are making reservations at, let me just bring up the name, restaurant.
We'll let, yeah, we'll follow up.
Okay, never mind. But anyway, there will be a dinner tonight, and so hopefully the commissioners can join. Commissioner Yoranga to celebrate his last meetings. All right, with that, anything else?
No, that concludes my executive director's report. Thank you.
Okay, and so with that, I will move on to Commissioner, item number 6B, Commissioner Correspondence. I'm still learning, you know?
There's no correspondence today, so we'll move on to item 6C, the legislative report, and Sean Drake will be providing that today. One second.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is the legislative report for May 2025. Staff is bringing analyses of three bills to you today, but first, let me start with an update on the legislative session. Last Friday was the deadline for fiscal bills to make it out of their policy committees in their first house. Most of the bills that staff is tracking in the written legislative report made that deadline and are now waiting to be heard in appropriations. In the run-up to last Friday's deadline, several of the commission's priority bills saw significant policy committee hearings and amendments, and I'll run through those quickly. First, AB 357 by Assembly Member David Alvarez, which staff presented an analysis of last month, was heard in the Assembly Natural Resources Committee last week. You'll recall that that bill would have exempted all university housing projects from the coastal act. Last week, the author accepted committee amendments which removed the proposed exemption and instead would shorten the timeline for the commission to act on CDPs for university housing projects, from the current Permit Streamlining Act deadline of 180 days from receiving a complete application to instead within 90 days of receiving a complete application. These amendments resolve staff's policy concerns with the bill. It is now in the Assembly Appropriations Committee. AB 996 by Assembly Member Pellerin also passed out of the Assembly Natural Resources Committee last week. That bill would establish the California Coastal Planning Fund to receive voluntary contributions to help support local coastal planning. Last month, additional language was added to the bill that would establish a voluntary process whereby local governments can consult with the commission as they work on the sea level rise planning and LCP amendments that state law requires all coastal local governments to complete by 2034. Staff has no policy concerns with this new component of the bill. That bill is now also in the Appropriations Committee. One last amended priority bill to highlight is SB 741 by Senator Blakespear. That bill would have entitled local governments and special districts to receiving emergency CDPs whenever they declare a state of emergency. Last month, Senator Blakespear amended the bill to instead specify that the existing coastal permit exemption for minor repairs to state highways also applies to minor repairs along the Loson Rail Corridor, which runs through the author's district. This amendment addresses staff's previous concerns with the bill. That bill is now in the Senate Appropriations Committee. There were a handful of commission priority bills that did not meet last Friday's deadline for passing out of policy committees. Those include AB 623 and SB 375, both of which would have created coastal act exemptions for vegetation clearance done for fire preparedness. Another priority bill that didn't meet the policy committee deadline was AB 1023, which would have transferred permitting authority from the Coastal Commission to the Port of LA for the port's upcoming electrification project. All of those bills are now two-year bills and can move again next January. Several other quick updates on priority bills. AB 462 by Assembly Member Loenthal, which would exempt ADUs from the coastal act in communities hit by disasters, is still in the Senate. It was recently referred to the Natural Resources and Water Committee and the Housing Committee. It has not yet been scheduled for a committee hearing. SB 254 by Senator Josh Becker is a new addition to the legislative report this month. This 160-page bill is the Senate's omnibus package for electricity affordability, and it contains provisions on a number of topics. Relevant to the commission, the bill would require the commission, BCDC, and the Energy Commission to create a plan for how the three agencies will coordinate their reviews of energy projects that are expedited through the AB 205 process. Another new addition to the lead report this month is SB 681 by Senator Ayesha Wahab. This is the Senate's housing omnibus bill. This is the Senate's housing omnibus bill. Relevant to the commission, the bill would require the commission to create processes for electronic submission of all Coastal Act-related submittals by July 2027. Staff do not have concerns with either of these omnibus bills, but will continue tracking them. Looking ahead, the appropriations committees will be deciding over the next few weeks which bills are moving on this year. Staff will report out next month on which of the commission's priority bills are moving into their second house. With that, Mr. Chair, I'll pause in case there are any questions about the legislative report before we move into the bill analyses that staff has prepared.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hart.
Well, I just want to say, because I probably won't speak again, but just great work on, I know, how hard you all have been working up there, and I want to thank you and Sarah Christie for everything you're doing in Sacramento. With regard to the timeline, you mentioned a bill, and I know there are others, where the timelines are being applied to the commission. In other words, rather than exemptions, the bills are now timeline bills, for example, the student housing bill. When that goes to approps, I mean, is there any consideration of what the impact is, given our staffing limitations to comply with that? How does, how's the legislature thinking about that?
Thank you for the question, if I may, through the chair. You keyed in on several bills, exactly, Chair Hart, where the commission's policy concerns have been addressed, but the bill in its revised form would now create accelerated timelines for certain types of projects. So while the policy concerns have been addressed, you're correct that accelerating timelines does carry the potential for a fiscal impact to the commission. As you know, the commission has finite capacity and moves as quickly as it can to process projects by the statutory deadlines. And so, when bills are amended, as several of these recently have been, to expedite those timelines, that puts the commission and the legislature in the position of evaluating what those fiscal impacts would be, and then considering those impacts as the bill moves through appropriations and through the legislative process. And so, for several of these that I mentioned, those amendments came into print within the past week, and so the agencies in the position now of evaluating the new timelines relative to existing staff resources and quantifying what does a fiscal impact look like, what additional staffing resources would be required for the commission to meet those new deadlines.
Through the chair, so then when it comes to approps, we would be addressing that? Is that what you anticipate, or?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
That analysis is something that, sorry, that, thank you for, I should have completed the thought that.
Right. No.
After arriving at that impact analysis, we would communicate that to the Appropriations Committee, who would factor it into their decision-making.
Thanks so much. That completes my question.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll turn it back to staff.
Thank you. So as I mentioned, this month, staff has prepared analyses of three bills, which can be found in staff's written report beginning on page 18. The first is SB 856 by the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee, and staff is recommending the commission take a support position. Relevant to the commission, this bill would clarify that when the commission waives the CDP application fee for a nonprofit that is proposing to develop a public access enhancement or habitat restoration project, the commission may specify whether the fee waiver also applies to future amendments to that CDP. Currently, the Coastal Act encourages the commission to grant fee waivers for public access and habitat restoration projects proposed by nonprofits. However, the Act is silent on whether such waivers may also cover future permit amendments, which are often needed, particularly for complex restorations, in order to adapt to changes in site conditions over time. This can lead to situations where even though a nonprofit had their original permit fee waived, it would need a request and the commission would need to act on additional fee waiver requests whenever an amendment to that permit comes in the door. This bill would clarify that the commission has the discretion, when it waives the original permit fee for the CDP, to specify whether that waiver also applies to future amendments to that permit that may be needed, saving time and further facilitating valuable public access and habitat restoration projects. In addition to clarifying this piece of the Coastal Act, the bill would also make various minor non-substantive changes to other sections of the Act, doing things like removing obsolete cross-references and providing other statutory cleanup. So overall, staff believes that the bill advances the general goal of keeping the language of the Coastal Act clear and up to date for the benefit of the commission and for the public. For this reason, staff is recommending that the commission support SB 856.
All right. So are there any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
We're not quite sure. We had Christopher Peterson signed up for the previous item, the Commissioner Correspondence, but we believe he might be signed up for the ledge report.
We'll allow them to speak.
Christopher Peterson, if you intend to wish, or if you intended to speak on this item, please unmute yourself.
Okay. I'm unmuted.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. I was actually planning to talk on SB 484 for the ledge report. Should I address that now, or should I do that after the presentation on SB 484?
We'll be presenting on that next, so maybe just hold tight, Mr. Peterson.
Okay.
All right. So seeing no members of the public signed to speak on SB 856, I'll bring it back to the commission for action on this item.
I'm prepared to make a motion that the commission register support for SB 856.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Nahtoff, second by Commissioner Escalante. The maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote, and given that Commissioner Guyre is participating remotely, I'll ask Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni.
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nahtoff.
Aye.
Nahtoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Okay. I'll turn it back to staff for the next bill.
Great, thank you. The second bill staff is bringing to you today is SB 484 by Senator John Laird. This bill would direct the commission by July 2027 to identify infill areas within three or more local jurisdictions that currently don't have a certified LCP. And in these infill areas, the commission would categorically exclude 100% affordable housing projects from needing to obtain a CDP from the commission. These categorical exclusion, or CDEX, areas would remain in effect for 10 years, and toward the end of that 10 years, the commission would submit a report to the legislature identifying the number of affordable housing projects that were built using the CDEXs. CDEXs aren't a new feature of the Coastal Act. The commission and local governments have used them in the past to facilitate important types of development in areas where construction won't impact coastal resources or public coastal access. This bill would pilot a new use for CDEXs by having the commission establish them in infill areas of uncertified jurisdictions specifically to promote affordable housing. The bill's focus on uncertified jurisdictions and on 100% affordable housing projects is intentional. Of the 76 local governments located in the coastal zone, there are some 12 cities that remain uncertified, including the cities of Monterey, Galita, Los Angeles, Santa Monica, San Clemente, and others. Given that these cities don't have LCPs, the commission is still in charge of coastal permitting in these jurisdictions. So by establishing CDEXs in these areas, the commission would simply exclude, be excluding affordable housing projects from its own jurisdiction. That's to say, the CDEXs wouldn't affect the local government's land use authority or other permits that a local government issues for affordable housing projects outside of the Coastal Act. There's also a consistent need for more affordable housing in these uncertified cities. In the last housing element cycle, all 12 uncertified cities came up short on one or more of their state targets for new affordable housing. At the same time, many of the cities vastly exceeded, and in some cases tripled, their target for producing market rate housing. Now, to be clear, this skew in favor of market rate housing isn't just limited to uncertified parts of the coast or to the coastal zone in general. The affordable housing crisis is truly a statewide issue. That said, given that the commission is the primary coastal permitting authority in uncertified areas, these parts of the coastal zone provide an opportunity for the commission to take direct action to facilitate the construction of new affordable housing in appropriate areas. The bill does contain useful sideboards to guide where and how the commission would establish the CDEXs. These include requiring the commission to choose a mix of jurisdictions with varying geography and population size, to focus on infill areas that are not vulnerable to sea level rise, and to consider what sites the local government has already identified in its housing element as being suitable for housing. Throughout all of this, the commission will be required to consult with HCD, who is already a close partner, so that they can also provide their input and expertise as the commission goes through this exercise. As this commission has said before, as California continues to grapple with its portion of the global housing crisis, all agencies have a responsibility to use the tools available to them to promote new housing, particularly new affordable housing. SB 484's approach of having the commission trial the use of CDEXs to promote affordable housing in uncertified areas strikes an appropriate balance of providing general sideboards to guide the establishment of the CDEXs while preserving adequate discretion for the commission to draw on its coastal management expertise to delineate the exclusion areas to maximize their utility while avoiding hazardous areas and impacts to coastal resources and public access. For these reasons, staff is recommending that the commission support SB 484.
Thank you so much. Okay. It looked like there was a member of the public who was signed up to speak on this item, so why don't we go onto the public first?
Christopher Peterson, go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Christopher Peterson. I agree with the staff recommendation to support SB 484 regarding categorical exclusions for affordable housing. I would like to remind the commission that you already have the authority to do what this bill would require you to do on a very small scale. Regardless of whether this bill ultimately becomes law, I urge the commission to go beyond the minimum requirements of the bill. The commission should pursue adopting CDEXs in as many uncertified jurisdictions as possible. And in addition, the commission should also use its existing authority to establish CDEXs for affordable housing in jurisdictions that already have LCPs. A temporary pilot project involving only three CDEXs is not sufficient to address the urgency of the housing crisis in the coastal zone. Thank you.
No, no more speakers.
Okay. I'll bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Hart.
Thanks so much. Again, thank you so much for, to our ledge staff for the great work on this. I just want to make a couple of comments about it. First of all, I just think this is a very exciting moment for the legislature and for the commission, because thanks to Senator Laird and his great staff, we now have an opportunity to really advance affordable housing in these uncertified areas by going through the process of essentially exempting these type of projects. It should really streamline what is a critical need in the coastal zone. And to see the senator now putting forward with our, I hope, full support today, and I'd like to make the motion, to really, to do this is wonderful. The amendments are great, and I'm not sure our public commenter realized that now the bill does provide for three or more, which I think is three or more uncertified jurisdictions to adopt, working with the commission to adopt this CDEX approach. So the limit of three is no longer in the bill. It's, three is the baseline, but it allows us to move forward with this approach in broader areas. So I think it's really exciting. So those are really my comments. I just am very excited about this bill, and I really hope it continues, and I hope that it's brought, it shows the legislature and the administration how serious the commission is about moving forward with affordable housing in the coastal zone. And again, I'd like to make the motion when I'm able. Thank you.
I'll second.
To just make the motion.
Oh, I thought you did.
No, I will do. Thank you so much, Commissioner Nahtoff. I move that the commission support SB 484 Coastal Resources Bill by Senator Laird.
Now I will second.
All right. Much of my.
And just also say, as part of the ledge committee on the commission, we've had a chance to see the evolution of this bill and how working together, we could really address this critical need for affordable housing in the coastal zone, workforce housing, those issues. And I appreciate the support from Mr. Peterson. I, you know, he's always urging us to do better, and it's glad, it's good to hear that we did at least well enough on this, and we can always do better too. So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Commissioner Wilson.
Yeah, of course, I strongly support this. And the Housing Committee, we met with Senator Laird on this, on this, and we're very, very supportive. And I do want to address just for a moment, the, you know, the little, the comments from Mr. Peterson, which I take to heart, and we're on an arc to do more and do better. And so I think this is a really good step in the right direction. And there is some, there is, there is some room to, you know, this is, this is focused on just affordable housing in the way it's defined in this space, and I think there's room to talk about this in later legislation on what we can do for workforce housing and other, other issues around that. And so I'm looking forward to receiving from Mr. Peterson, hopefully some comments in the future external to this, to offer some suggestions on where we might, where we might advocate more strongly, and I'm happy to have our Housing Committee, you know, discuss those in more depth. Thanks.
Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to extend my thanks to Senator Laird and his team for working on this. I think the intentionality of it is very critical, especially at this time. And, you know, just reflecting on sort of this idea of affordability in the context of present times where, you know, when we're talking about affordable housing, it's just, it's not really just for the lowest-income folks in the state, but it's becoming a broader, broader swath, including, you know, the middle class, where affordable really has just a whole new meaning. So this is going to be serving a lot bit more people than, you know, I think that the term itself and the ethos behind it implies. So I'm grateful for all of this, for the work. I hope that this is just the beginning of kind of this new thinking of how to be proactive, to plan ahead of time, especially under the new circumstances of climate change, where conditions are changing so quickly. But it's, I think, planning ahead and identifying the places where we can get in there and move things along quicker. I think that's a, it's a great way forward. So thanks so much, staff, for all your work.
All right. Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, I just want to echo what the fellow commissioners have been saying as it pertains to, you know, one, thanking Senator Laird and his staff and coastal staff for really working together to bring forward a bill that advances housing, affordable housing in particular, in the coastal zone, in such a way that the commission's able to get behind. And I really just hope that this serves as an example of how the Coastal Commission and our staff can work with the legislature to bring forward bills that we both, that we're all able to get behind. And I think this really reflects our values around wanting to advance affordable housing and how serious we are about it, and our commitment to collaboration and making sure that we can do, we can move forward with legislation that balances protecting our coastal environments and also advancing housing in a way that's responsible. And so with that, we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, second by Commissioner Nahtoff. I'll ask Ms. Miller for a roll call vote on this item.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni.
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nahtoff.
Aye.
Nahtoff, yes.
Aye.
Nahtoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Okay. And I'll turn it back to staff for the last item.
Thank you. The final bill staff is bringing to you today is SB 675 by Senator Steve Padilla. Staff is not recommending that the commission take a position on the bill at this time, but we're presenting an analysis today to provide information. but we're presenting an analysis today to provide information to both the commission and the public about the bill. SB 675 would create a streamlined approval process for a new class of project called a waterfront environmental leadership development project, which would be defined as a project with more than a million square feet of new development located on the waterfront in the Embarcadero District of the Port of San Diego. The only project that fits that definition is the forthcoming Seaport San Diego project currently being planned by the Port of San Diego. SB 675 would establish a new expedited coastal act review process for the Seaport San Diego project. Specifically, the bill would require the commission to review and respond within 60 days to any project documents submitted by the applicant or the lead agency, which is in this case, the port, prior to the port's certification of a project EIR. Any issues that the commission doesn't raise in its comments during the port's SEQA process would be deemed waived, and the commission would be prohibited from raising those issues when the project is actually before the commission. Once the project is before the commission, the commission will be required to take final action within 180 days receiving the initial application. The bill also contains placeholder language expressing intent to amend the bill further, to also apply to appeals, and to constrain the commission's ability to deny or impose conditions on the Seaport San Diego project unless the commission makes specific findings that the project is inconsistent with the coastal act or the San Diego Port Master Plan. Based on conversations with the author, SB 675 was introduced out of a concern that the commission may not provide timely or favorable review of the Seaport San Diego project either during the port's SEQA process, when the port comes to the commission for the necessary Port Master Plan amendment, or if a CDP approved by the port for the project is appealed to the commission. It is understandable that applicants and public agencies would want expedited outcomes for priority projects, and in similar situations, the commission has worked out agreements with developers of large projects to provide greater certainty for the pace and timing of staff review of materials. The approach currently taken by the bill, however, raises several policy concerns. 60 days is an ambitious timeline for the commission to review and provide comprehensive substantive comments on a variety of complex topics that this project will need to address, such as sea level rise, coastal engineering, and the public trust doctrine, among others. The consequence of missing the deadline for comments would be that those issues would be waived when the project comes before the commission. The commission does always aim to provide timely and thorough comments while a project is going through SEQA, because that's in the best interest of the commission for the EIR to be as comprehensive as possible. But with current staffing levels, there is always a balancing act between providing comments on projects undergoing SEQA review while also making sure to meet the legal deadlines for acting on projects that are already pending before the commission. Performing a full SEQA act review, or excuse me, a full coastal act review of the Seaport San Diego project while the port is still going through SEQA and hasn't yet submitted a Port Master Plan amendment, the commission will be a challenge to do on top of the commission's workload. Further constraining the commission's review would be the requirement to act on any project-related approval, including the Port Master Plan amendment, and any project-related appeals within 180 days of submission. In all other cases, the deadlines that govern when the commission must take action on a project are based on when the commission receives a complete application. This ensures that if the initial application is missing one or more key elements, the applicant can follow up with additional information, and this allows the commission to have a complete record when it's making the legal findings necessary to make a decision. SB 675 was heard in the Senate Natural Resources and Water Committee last week. During the hearing, both the committee and the author acknowledged that the bill is a work in progress. In his presentation, Senator Padilla affirmed that his intention is not to weaken the coastal act or set a negative precedent. Staff have had several conversations with the senator's office, both in advance of and since that hearing. Additional amendments to the bill, including to address the placeholders left open by the committee, are expected to be worked out over the coming weeks as the bill continues moving through the committee process. It's worth noting that earlier versions of SB 675 would have constrained the commission's authority far more than the current language. In light of that, staff is committed to continuing conversations to address the author's process concerns around the Seaport San Diego project in a manner that maintains the coastal act standards for protecting coastal resources, public access, and the public trust. With that, I'd like to turn it to Executive Director Hucklebridge in case she has anything she'd like to add.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that I did have the chance to meet with Senator Padilla and attend the Senate Natural Resources Committee last week. There was a lot of activity on this bill in the very recent, last several weeks, and I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the senator's comments to the committee that he's a staunch supporter of the protections provided by the coastal act and is committed to maintaining the integrity of the act. So we look forward to continued conversations with the senator, as well as with the project applicant and the port, to really nail down some of the timing and sequencing of a review process for this really complex Seaport Village project moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. So are there any members of the public signed up to comment on this item?
There are no speakers for this item.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission. Start with Commissioner O'Malley.
Thanks, Chair. First, I want to appreciate the staff's work on this and the really thorough analysis. I'll come out and just say this, I have serious concerns over this proposal, as I imagine some of you do. The project itself, and my familiarity is, it's massive, it's huge, right? And this is kind of curtailing back to your earlier statements about some of the legislation that is creating perhaps quicker timelines and more burden on staff, and I see this just as another one. And I think that, you know, with these accelerated deadlines or whatnot, there's likelihood that the staff review, whether it's technical, legal, or otherwise, is just, it would be rushed. I mean, quite frankly, and then maybe more likely to challenge. And so, you know, I consider, I really hope that you'll continue to keep pushing on this. I guess I have a question. Let's say, in my case, maybe all of our case, the worst-case scenario is that these are the deadlines that are cemented in, and they're moving forward. And I wondered if the commission in the past has or would consider requiring or at least allowing applicants to pay additional fees to hire coastal staff to take on the additional work? And I, I've seen this working in regional water boards, where folks can actually give, you know, pay for staff, but they're in no way responsible for the management of that staff. It would just be, you know, you all would hire them, and, and, and so I wondered if we're in the case scenario where we have all this additional work, staff has all this additional work, the time limits are 60, 90, whatever, if that's something that's been explored or could work.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Malley, for those comments. And just to respond, we've, this is a topic and an idea that's come up many times in the past before, and we have explored it in a couple of different ways. I think we've really, as an agency, wanted to maintain our independence and that separation from applicants and projects. That said, there are situations where we, we have sought to, you know, those types of arrangements that we, for example, the Port of San Diego does pay for a staff person to work solely, you know, it's a staff, it's a commission staff person, it's actually a longtime staff person, but they work solely on port projects, and the workload there is substantial. This is just one example of many projects that we're working on with the Port of San Diego. And so that is an example of, of, you know, we have explored those when they're appropriate. Doing it for one project brings up concerns, I think, for us in terms of, again, maintaining our independence and some potential legal challenges there. But again, it's, it's worth exploring and something that we talk about regularly. So I think we've, we've made the argument, both to the legislature and to you all, that, you know, this, it is a staffing issue. The, there is a, there has been a lot of legislation recently, as we've talked about today, but even in the past couple of years, to expedite commission process. And while I think in theory we're really supportive of that, we're also experiencing a decrease in our budget, a pretty significant decrease, both from the state and the federal side. So it's going to be a real challenge to meet those deadlines, to your point, to do that in a way that we maintain our process and we can withstand legal, legal challenge. So we've brought this issue to, up in every context that we can, and we'll have to do the best with the resources that we have, and, and we'll, you know, we'll be upfront with you all as those challenges present themselves. But I appreciate the idea, and I just wanted you to know, we think about that constantly as an option, and we'll definitely pursue it when we think it's appropriate.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hart.
Thanks. I mean, I just want to say that I share Commissioner O'Malley's concerns about the My understanding, this is not Senator Padilla's district, is that correct?
Yes, I believe it is Senator Blake Spears' district.
And she did chair a committee hearing on this bill. Do you have anything to comment on with regard to that hearing, or?
I believe that the bill, if it went through Senate Environmental Quality, which that senator chairs, was in a substantially different form than it is now. So any discussion that happened in the context of a hearing in that setting would have had a different focus than the bill's focus now, which is more, I think, squarely on the Seaport San Diego project.
Right, so it was reduced, coming out of the hearing, that she chaired to just address this particular project?
Originally, the bill would have applied to all responsible agencies reviewing any qualifying waterfront ELDP project, so it would have been the commission as well as a number of other state entities, and had a host of other provisions that would have applied broadly. As it's been amended, the bill now applies squarely to the commission in its capacity as a responsible agency, and in the way that the definition of a waterfront ELDP project has been defined, now is more, I think, squarely focused on the Seaport San Diego project.
Thanks. I mean, I'm, I just am very concerned about bills like this, and as, just as a starting point, but as it evolves, if it becomes a bill that includes a sequencing approach, which I would imagine that might be the direction that it would head, I just think it's very important that the sequencing and the fund, and our ability to respond to whatever that timeline is are addressed as it moves through these hearings. We're discussing it over and over, but I just want to reinforce, that's a big concern. So whatever the sequence is, we have to be able to comply with it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson.
So this is just process. Is this the end of the legislative report right now, that we were at?
Yes, it is.
And we're not voting on this one? This is, okay.
Correct.
So then, is this okay? Is it time to make just a comment, legislative report related, but not, okay?
Yes.
Great. As I mentioned last month, and I just wanted to still highlight, there's a bit of a sleeper bill called AB 770. It amends the Outdoor Advertising Act to, basically, it redefines what customary maintenance is under that provision, or, and I just want to, people understand that there are six, over 6,500 structures that are covered under the Outdoor Advertising Act and the jurisdiction of that, of that agency. And we're talking about big billboards, little billboards, wooden billboards, metal, all of them across our landscapes. But what this would do is basically say that, under customary maintenance, the replacement of any structural uprights and any structural members of that, that would be under customary maintenance, where right now it's not under customary maintenance, where it would require permit, building permit, local jurisdiction building permit. And by removing that, what happens is, for these 6,500 structures throughout California, and I mean ones that are in, we see them in bays and wetlands, along our roadsides, in culturally sensitive areas, I mean, they're just in all kinds of, I spotted one on state parks land last week, attached to a redwood tree. So basically, for example, and so what I'm saying is that this language would basically exempt all of those things from all California regulation, and I mean all of them, not just the coastal act, but your local zoning, your local building code. So basically, that work will be done without any external review outside the company itself. So we would, as a public, have to trust that was done in a safe manner, that would have, you know, the wind loads and all that, that would meet the uniform building code. And so what I'm just letting folks know is, like, if you have a local jurisdiction, and this is important to you, you might want to take a look at AB 770. It also, if you're replacing those uprights, that means you're going to have to do foundation work. This basically exempts you from getting your, from, you know, the requirements around your utilities, requirements around impacts to your wetlands, if it's in wetlands, or if there's cultural resources nearby, or any of those things, and also public safety elements of that. There's no requirement for letting the property owner know. We know that many of these, of these billboards, because of changes over time, and they were built at times where maybe permits weren't required, or they're nonconforming, many of them encroach on public trust lands, they also encroach on Caltrans property as well. So this is a pretty major, there isn't another commercial structure in the state of California that would have this exemption. It's pretty extreme. So I just want folks to know about that, and I know we don't, haven't addressed it necessarily here, but I'm just using this platform to, again, it's AB 770, and something to, people should take a look at. Thanks.
So two quick comments. One, going back to the previous bill, I just want to share my concerns around setting realistic expectations, and I think that we really need to, you know, I think, staff has been obviously expressing this at the legislature, but I do think it can't be overemphasized that if we are given unrealistic expectations, then it's just going to, you know, potentially open up the door for errors, you know, causing errors, which could then potentially in the future open us up to litigation, which would then drag the process out even further. And so I think that it is really critical that we're emphasizing that if we want to do a good job on these projects and expedite them, then we need the time to process the applications appropriately, so we make sure that we can, you know, dot all of our i's and cross all our t's and have everything as, kind of tightened up as possible. With regards to Commissioner Wilson's concerns regarding AB 770, I'm wondering if next month we can bring an item back on the ledge report for us to consider for taking action. Um, it does sound like there could be some implications within the coastal zone around permitting, and given Commissioner Wilson's concern, I think it is something that maybe we should consider taking a position on.
Thank you for the comments and for the request. I would note that written ledge reports so far this year, although staff have been aware of this bill, it's not something that we have, I think, fully evaluated and added to the ledge report as one of the bills that we're tracking. And so, starting next month, we can correct that and certainly add it to the list and start to tease out an evaluation of how this bill would play out in the coastal zone and the context of kind of the universe of bills that we're tracking here.
Okay. That'd be very much appreciated. Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Chair. And I just want to second that, and align myself with Commissioner Wilson. You know, I think Del Norte County might be one of those that will probably be most impacted, just because most of our billboards are in wetlands. And I, you know, I can see, I can understand why the authors who are from Southern California might just sort of have a very different perspective on those billboards, but I would hope that we can communicate with their offices and, and make sure that this is not going to cause even bigger problems. I mean, it's already impossible to remove what's already there, so if, you know, we just make it even, you know, easier for these things to persist without any kind of oversight within the coastal zone, I think that's incredibly problematic. So, thank you for adding that.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, what I'm thinking we can do is, we, let's try to get through administrative calendar, consent calendar, items removed from consent, and then we'll take a break, and when we come back, we'll start with the North Coast District after lunch. And so with that, that'll conclude our legislative report, and so we'll move on to item 16.5, Administrative Calendar. I'll turn it back to staff.
So that does take us to item 6.5A, which is the Administrative Calendar for all districts and units on the agenda today. There's one project being reported. Conditions are acceptable to the applicants. There's no known public interest, so here we're looking for whether four or more commissioners object to the issuance of this administrative permit.
All right. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak on this item?
Uh, no. We only have those available for questions.
Okay. Bringing it back to the commission, are there four or more commissioners who object to the staff's recommendation? Seeing a non-commission concurs. That moves us onto item number seven, Consent Calendar. I'll turn it back to staff for presentation on this item.
Thank you. So there are four items from Orange County and one from San Diego County. There is correspondence on item 7A in favor of the project, as well as an addendum with a correction to the applicant's name. There's also correspondence on item 7E also in favor of that item. So conditions are acceptable, no known opposition. So we're recommending these matters be approved on the consent calendar.
Okay. Are there any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Uh, no, just questions again.
Okay, I'm bringing it back to the commission. Questions, comments, or a motion to approve item number seven, Consent Calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
You have a second? We have a motion by Commissioner Escalante, seconded by Commissioner Harmon to approve Consent Calendar. I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Notoff?
Aye.
Notoff, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner Wilson? Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right. With that, let's move on to the next item, Consent Calendar. Items removed from regular agenda to consent. And I'll turn it over to staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you. So today, we have one item from North Coast, four from Orange County, three from San Diego area that we're recommending be moved to consent. And that list is as follows. So item 10A, that's the application 122509, the City of Crescent City's Beachfront Park improvements project. Item 12B, the City of Dana Point's LCP amendment on the Strand Transit System Language Update. Item 14C, 14D and 14E, these are all the City of Seal Beach Public Parking Lot Fee Increase Projects. Item 16A, the City of Encinitas's LCP amendment on their El Camino Real specific plan. Item 16D, the City of Imperial Beach's LCP amendment on their Alternative Temporary Housing and Density Bonus Update. And item 18A, Application 623589, the Bates Application from Solana Beach. I do have some comments on a couple of these items. So there is correspondence on item 12B and an addendum in the response. This is the Dana Point LCP amendment to modify the LCP as it relates to the Strand's beach area to allow the city to use a transportation system different from a funicular to deliver beachgoers to the beach down this steeply inclined area, so long as the performance is the same as the funicular. This is being sought due to longstanding maintenance problems with the funicular. The correspondence that we received generally advises the commission against processing the LCP amendment as minor due to concerns over the lack of details available at this time for the replacement system, including the timeline. The letter also expresses concerns about other violations at other sites within the Dana Headlands LCP area. So staff responded in an addendum noting that the proposed amendment, it does meet the standards to qualify as minor in this case. The proposed amendment is being sought in order to enable the city to resolve an ongoing problem with the functionality of the funicular that has prevented it from performing as intended. And further, the details of the planned replacement system would become available when the proposal goes through the local coastal development permit process. And that action would be appealable to the commission. So staff didn't identify any changes needed to the LCP amendment, and we're continuing to recommend that approved on consent. There's also one comment letter on item 16A, the El Camino Real specific plan. The commenter raises concerns regarding traffic safety and increased noise and light pollution impacting the local environment. Staff has reviewed the comments and believes the proposed specific plan addresses these issues. The proposed plan provides standards for lighting and reducing noise impacts. And future development within the plan area would be subject to the environmental project policies of the certified LCP. With respect to the traffic safety, the mobility section of the plan includes design standards for improvements to mobility and safety for vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian traffic. And the proposed plan also includes guidance on improving the pedestrian and bicycle network in the area, including bike paths, sidewalks, trails and linear connections such as paseos, as well as high visibility crosswalks that seek to improve pedestrian comfort, accessibility and safety. So staff hasn't identified any issues with this LCP amendment, and we continue to support the matter as de minimis. So with that, we are recommending approval of the matters mentioned pursuant to the staff recommendations. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to any of these items?
No, we just have those available for questions.
Okay. Bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, action. Commissioner Escalante?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm glad, you know, I'm not going to remove it from the consent calendar because I know that we want to move along, but definitely want to acknowledge the incredible work to get to item 10A, the City of Crescent, the City of Crescent City Beachfront Park. What an incredible project. I can't, I mean, I do regret not being able to kind of season the pictures right now because it's really, I encourage everybody to just see our exhibits. It is incredibly exciting with all this sort of cultural and educational aspects. It's a huge park. It's actually a buffer from, you know, the harbor, which has some tendencies to, you know, exacerbate tsunamis and things. So it is a very kind of important piece of land for the city, for the area, and has so much potential. And I think this is, you know, taking advantage of all of that space. The amphitheater, for example, I think that's just going to be, the community really sort of needs a space to bring people together like that outdoors. So this is just going to be so valuable in so many ways for this community. So I congratulate the city, the county partners, the partners in the harbor, everybody who was involved. We know some of us got a tour of this sort of to kind of get an idea what it was going to look like. But, you know, this is way beyond what I was expecting. So I can't wait to be at that river, river cutting if I'm able to. So I like to move this just because this is on the calendar if it's possible. Thanks.
Second?
Okay, so that was a motion for the consent calendar?
Yes, motion for consent calendar.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Escalante, seconded by Commissioner Notoff. The maker of the motion is asking for his yes vote for items on the consent calendar removed from regular agenda. I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Notoff?
Aye.
Notoff, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right. With that, we are going to break for lunch. And let's try to be back here at one.
Would it be all right if we just do the DDR for North Coast? That's the only item for that district. So it might be nice to get that done before lunch.
Sure, let's go for it.
Thank you for that. Good morning, Chair Cummings and Commissioners. The Deputy Director Report for the North Coast District includes two waivers this month. And there has been no comments or opposition to these matters. And we are asking whether three or more commissioners object to these items.
Is there anybody sign up to comment on the DDR report for the North Coast?
There's no speakers.
All right, bringing it back to the commission. Are there three more commissioners who object to the staff recommendation? Seeing a non-commission concurs. And now we'll break for lunch. And we will see everybody back here. Let's try to get back around 12:55 so we can start on time at 1:00 PM.
I might want to, we do have to go offsite to grab lunch. So we may want to take a full hour just to make sure that we have time to get back. And, or maybe we keep it at 12:55, but give everybody a five-minute grace period or something to that effect.
So we'll say, try to get back by 12:55. We'll start around 1:15 to give a little bit of wiggle room.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, if folks can take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started with the rest of our meeting. All right, so next up on our agenda, we have the South Coast District, Orange County Deputy Director's Report. So I'll turn it back to staff for the report on this item.
In this packet, we're reporting the first item is the option of the
Can you maybe move your mic a little bit closer?
Yeah.
There we go.
So in this packet, we're reporting the City of Laguna Beach option of the Commission's suggestion related to their housing programs update. Executive Director Harmon had action adequate and complete the We'll try again here. Is that better? Okay. Do I need to say the other over again? We're good on that? Okay. So we're also reporting on the issuance of the emergency permit issued to Orange County Transportation Authority to address the threat of damage to the railroad tracks by wave erosion from storm and King Tide events and landslides through reinforcement of existing revetment and placement of sand seaward of that revetment. And we do have a staff PowerPoint, if we could bring that up. Just a couple of slides here. So for this area, we're talking about four areas that OCTA has identified as high priority for addressing hazards along the rail corridor in San Clemente. So we will show a map of the area's locations in just a moment. But to outline the main issues, the railroad here was constructed in the late 1800s on a dynamic beach and seaward of bluffs prone to landsliding. Today, Areas 1 and 2 are characterized by a narrow beach and rock embankment that is subject to wave action on the seaward side of the rail. Area 3 is a stretch of coastal bluffs that experience relatively frequent landslides, including the 2024 Mariposa landslide and several additional landslides since. And Area 4 has a slightly wider beach than Areas 1 and 2 and could experience wave action during a large storm. Next slide, please. So the OCTA has identified four priority areas shown on this slide. And we will update you on the general actions and status associated with each area as we move from north to south or left to right on the slide. Areas 1 and 2 are seaward of the rail at San Clemente City Beach, just south of the Capistrano Shores Community and North Beach, and span a little over a half mile. The riprap repair, including about 7,650 tons of imported rock, is shown here in orange. Just seaward of the rock, you'll see an area shown in yellow where 240,000 cubic yards of beach compatible sand is proposed to be placed as additional protection for the rail line, as well as to build up the beach for coastal access and recreation and habitat area. This work was approved under Emergency Permit 52513. That was issued on April 10th, which we're reporting to you today. And OCTA has started the rock repair activities as of April 28th. The proposed catchment wall, shown in blue and annotated with number three, is on the inland side of the tracks and would span about 1,300 linear feet. Additionally, OCTA is proposing to replace the public coastal trail that was destroyed and closed following the Mariposa landslide in January 2024. The emergency permit authorized removal of the remaining pedestrian trail bridge segments, as well as clearing, grubbing and preparing the site. And this work also commenced on April 28th and was finished by May 2nd. The rail is expected to be closed for this work for approximately six weeks to conduct the emergency work in those areas. The remaining work at Area 3, including the removal of the temporary retaining wall that was installed in response to the Mariposa slide, and construction of the proposed new wall, that'll be discussed in more detail later today when we have the hearing on CDP Application 524398, which is item 14F. And Area 4, which is shown on the right side of the slide, that stretches about three quarters of a mile. OCTA has proposed some riprap repair, which is shown in the orange coloring, and placement of about 300,000 cubic yards of sand in the area shown in yellow. And construction of a seawall, which is shown in the light blue on the seaward side of the rail along the southern end of San Clemente State Beach. Although we recognize there is urgency, Commission has not yet seen evidence demonstrating that emergency condition exists in that Area 4. Of course, that could change with time. But meanwhile, we are working with OCTA to quickly complete their pending CDP application for the work in this area so that we can bring that to you as a regular CDP application as soon as possible. And OCTA, meanwhile, is working on identifying sources of beach compatible sand for placement here in Area 4, as well as in Areas 1 and 2. OCTA also has an incomplete application for the follow-up CDP at the Cypress Shores landslide emergency permit, which is located immediately south of Area 4 or on the far right-hand side of the slide on Slide 2. Commission staff are waiting on some feedback from OCTA before bringing that item to hearing. But with that, you know, we're happy to answer any questions about the work going on there. But before I do that, let me just complete my report by noting that in addition to the LCP matter, the emergency permit, there are four waivers and two CDP extensions being considered. There's no opposition to the waivers or the extensions. So with that, we're asking whether three or more commissioners object to any of the waivers in the report.
Thank you so much. Are there any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have Susie White Law, who initially commented during a general public comment. And we moved her over to this item. Susie White Law, you're in as a panelist. You should be able to unmute yourself and begin.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to speak. What I would like to do is just to reiterate what the former mayor of San Clemente, Chris Duncan, said earlier today. A year and a half ago, OCTA embarked upon a two-year study to evaluate different alternatives that could be used to support the tracks. And they started off with a lot of public comment periods. And then it just sort of dropped away. And we recently learned that they have taken that entire process and put it on an indefinite pause while they are waiting to try to get an emergency permit for Area 4 especially. And that just really seems wrong. They need to look at all of the alternatives in a public and open process and look at the potential environmental impacts and evaluate those against the needs of the track and the needs of public access to the beach. We are not in favor of either the huge rock revetment that they proposed or the vertical seawall that would have a 40-foot footprint. It's not a narrow seawall that they are looking at. It's not going to reduce the footprint of the revetment by very much. And it will be hugely disastrous for the beach. I would like to request the Coastal Commission, require them as part of any permit application that they continue on with this study that was that they continue on with this study that was supposed to be finished in fall 2025, to continue on with that study, continue on with the public process, continue on with evaluating the potential environmental impacts. This is California taxpayer money we are looking at spending, and it's just inconceivable they use that for a county to use state money to destroy a state beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for hanging around to give your comment. And then we also have OCTA on Zoom as well, available for questions.
All right, I'll bring it back to the Commission and see if there's any commissioners who have questions, comments. Seeing none, I guess I'll just, since OCTA is on the line, I'm wondering if they maybe could respond to the comments regarding the public process around the environmental impacts and plan, and maybe if they can just speak to that since we have them on the line.
They're being promoted in as a panelist right now. I believe Jason Lee is the representative from OCTA. And when you're able to, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Darrell Johnson. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of the Orange County Transportation Authority, and I'm happy to answer the question.
Yeah, I was just, I don't know if you all heard the comments that were made by the member of the public, but I'm just wondering if you all had a response because it sounded like they had some concerns around the lack of public engagement, and there was a public process that was happening that was halted. And I'm just wondering if you could respond to that, just for clarification for the Commission.
Yes, be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity. So we've been very clear to the public that we view this in three specific timeframes and buckets. I'll work from reverse. The farthest-term bucket is the relocation study, which the California State Transportation Agency has agreed to lead on behalf of all the partners in the agency. So that's the long-term relocation, 30 years or longer. And then the study that Ms. Whitelaw is referring to is the near-term study, which we would look at as two to 30 years, protect and place and repair. And what we're focusing on today, as outlined by Mr. Schwing, is the emergency repairs in Areas 1, 2, 3, and 4 as the first bucket. So Ms. Whitelaw is correct, we did start and have engaged public outreach for the two-year to 30-year timeframe, but we've been very focused in the short term on the emergency repairs before the Commission today. We have not indefinitely put the longer-term study on hold, but we do have emergency activities that we believe are critical, and we are focusing on those first.
Great, thank you so much. All right, so seeing no further questions or comments, do three or more commissioners object to the staff recommendation? Seeing none, Commission concurs, and we'll move on to our next item. Item number 12, Local Coastal Program. This is 12A, City of Newport Beach LCP Amendment Number LCP-5-NPB-NPB-24-0004-1, Parts A, B, and C, Short-Term Rentals and Mixed Use, 1602 East Coast Highway and IP Cleanup. And I'll turn that to staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Chloe Seifert with our Long Beach office is going to do the staff presentation on this matter. If we could get the PowerPoint pulled up. And Chloe, as soon as you're ready, please begin.
Let me know if there's any problems with my audio. Item 12A is a request by the City of Newport Beach to amend the Certified Implementation Plan, or IP, of the Certified Local Coastal Program, or LCP. The city's request includes three parts, all of which are scheduled for the current Commission hearing. Part A is a major amendment to allow short-term rentals, or STRs, in mixed-use zones. Part B is a major amendment to increase the scope and intensity of allowable land uses in a planned community. And Part C is a major amendment to correct inaccuracies and improve the brevity of the certified IP. Next slide, please. First, we'll discuss Part A of the LCP Amendment Request, which pertains to STRs. On this slide, you can see a map of the city's 1,480 existing STRs. Newport Beach was founded as a beach resort town and first began regulating STRs in the 1990s, with regulations evolving throughout the following 30 years to restrict STRs to solely multi-unit residential zones. In 2021, the Commission also approved an LCP amendment establishing a 1,550 permit cap on STRs in the city's coastal zone. The city does not intend to change that maximum cap, and instead, they propose a pilot program to shift 75 STR permits from residential to mixed-use zones. The city's hope is that visitors would benefit from closer proximity to commercial uses, like restaurants and cafes, and commercial uses would benefit from the increased foot traffic. Next slide, please. Part A of the subject amendment request would decrease the STR cap in multi-unit residential zones by 75 permits, or from 1,550 to 1,475, and increase the short-term rental permit cap in two mixed-use zones by 75 permits, or from 0 to 75 permits. The two mixed-use zones, the mixed-use Water District and the mixed-use Canary Village and 15th Street District, were chosen for their smaller size compared to other mixed-use corridors with the intent of a soft-start approach. The city's revisions would limit STR permit eligibility in mixed-use zones to property owners who own at least 20 dwelling units within a single statistical area. The latter term is defined in the city's Uncertified General Plan, and it's similar to a council district. The city states that this is intended to encourage professional STR management and make their regulation enforcement easier. Next slide, please. As proposed, the city could begin approving mixed-use zone STRs before existing residential zone STRs dipped in number. The city would also exclude at least 30 legally non-conforming STRs in mixed-use zones from their 75 permit cap. This proposal would effectively increase the number of STRs beyond 1,550 permits. Upon discussion with Commission staff, the city agreed to suggested modification 1, which you can see here, limiting the net number of STR permits in the coastal zone to 1,550 at all times. The modification also ensures that legally non-conforming STR permits are included in that cap. Suggested modification 2 simply updates section naming conventions to reflect the inserted language. The city's proposed STR parking requirements also raise a problem with public access, excuse me, as the proposed language allows the use of public on-street parking for private commercial uses. Suggested modification 3 adds language prohibiting this use, requires STR operators to protect the stock of public parking, and to satisfy parking demand through alternative methods. Overall, the certified LUP prioritizes visitor-serving recreational facilities over private development. Visitor-serving uses are especially prioritized on the Balboa Peninsula, where most of the subject mixed-use zones are located. As proposed and modified, the city's revisions would offer visitors overnight accommodations located closer to visitor-serving businesses without disrupting the city's existing balance of land uses. This is consistent with the LUP's priority land use. Next slide, please. Next, we'll discuss Part B of the LCP Amendment Request, which pertains to Plan Community Number 47 in Newport Beach. The subject site is a seven-acre country club located roughly half a mile inland of Newport Harbor in a visitor-serving commercial district, Newport Center. Next slide, please. As shown here, the country club is developed with two main areas, a golf club outlined here in white and a tennis club outlined here in yellow. Part B is a project-specific LCP amendment request intended to enable local approval of a tennis club redevelopment project. The proposed revisions would alter the allowable number of tennis courts, pickleball courts, condominium units, and motel units allowed within the tennis club footprint. The city's proposed revisions would increase the scope of visitor-serving facilities allowed on-site while ensuring adequate parking and building design requirements. Next slide, please. The project site is located adjacent to an LUP-designated coastal view road. This slide shows two vantage points from the designated view road. On the left is an elevated Google Maps photograph taken with a camera mounted to a van roof, and on the right is a photograph taken by a city planner standing on the sidewalk. Large trees and hedges previously approved by the Commission block all blue-water views, unless one is significantly elevated off the ground. In the event that there are blue-water views, which Commission staff have not identified, suggested modification 4 resolves the issue by adding language prohibiting any obstruction from LUP-designated coastal view roads. Next slide, please. Next, Part C of the subject amendment request is intended to make general corrections and improvements to the IP's brevity. One of the city's proposed revisions would eliminate Certified IP Chapter 21.34 for the conversion or demolition of affordable housing. The intent of this IP chapter is to implement Mellow Act requirements by requiring one-to-one replacement of any affordable housing units in the coastal zone. Next slide, please. Both the Mellow Act and IP Chapter 21.34 list certain developments that are exempt from affordable unit replacement requirements. One such exemption pertains to land availability in the surrounding area. If a project is located in a city with less than 50 aggregate acres of privately-owned and vacant land available for residential use, both within the coastal zone and a three-mile radius therefrom, it is exempt from the subject requirements. The city conducted a survey and found 17 aggregate acres far below the 50-acre threshold, and they concluded exemption from the subject chapter's unit replacement requirements. The city wishes to delete the subject IP chapter to improve brevity and accuracy of the certified IP. Next slide, please. Preservation of affordable housing is clearly a priority for the Commission. However, the Coastal Act specifically limits the Commission's ability to reject or modify the proposed IP chapter deletion. Section 311 of the Coastal Act prohibits the Commission from reviewing a local government's application of Mellow Act requirements. Section 305.00.1 of the Coastal Act prohibits the Commission from requiring an LCP to include housing policies and programs. Ultimately, the Commission simply does not have the authority to require compliance with the Mellow Act or to include Mellow Act housing policies in an LCP. The question before the Commission is solely whether the proposed revision conflicts with the certified LUP, and it does not. It's important to note, though, that the city must still comply with state housing law, regardless of whether said laws are codified in the city's certified LCP. This includes more recent state housing laws, which offer more protection than the one-to-one replacement requirements of IP Chapter 21.34. The proposed IP chapter deletion will not change the city's responsibilities in terms of affordable housing preservation. Next slide, please. Part C of the LCP Amendment Request would also add a new category of development that is exempt from permitting requirements. Specifically, the city's proposed revision would exempt tentative parcel maps that subdivide airspace units for condominium purposes. This slide shows an example of an airspace subdivision, in which units are vertically divided into three-dimensional stacked parcels. These subdivisions mainly affect legal ownership interests and generally pose a low risk of coastal resource impacts. However, the proposed new exemption category is not founded in any Coastal Act provision as required by the certified LUP. Establishing a new exemption category independent from the Public Resources Code would raise LUP nonconformance. Suggested modification 5 thus eliminates the city's proposed new exemption category, and suggested modification 6 also corrects the city's revisions to include previously amended language that has been submitted since this current request. Last slide, please. In closing, staff is recommending that the following actions on the subject amendment request be taken. We recommend that the Commission reject Parts A through C of the subject amendment request and approve Parts A through C with suggested modifications. This will result in two motions and resolutions for each part of the LCP amendment. The motions and resolutions can be found on pages 9 through 11 of the staff report. Lastly, staff would note that after publication of the staff report, we received comment letters from four members of the public and Better Neighbors LA. The comment letters identified concerns with an increase in STR permits and a desire to revise the city's larger STR permit industry. Staff addressed these issues in the staff report and addendum, and this concludes staff's presentation. We are available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any expertises on this item? Commissioner Harmon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Monday at 3:15 PM, I think it was via Zoom, or maybe Teams, sorry, I had a short meeting with Jaime Murillo from the City of Newport Beach and Don Schmitz. We talked primarily about the STR component of this and the change to allow a certain number of STRs in mixed-use areas. They spoke about the long history of visitor-serving accommodations in the city, the extensive hotels and motels, that they're not changing the previously approved upon cap, and noted that the city's tightened up regulations around use of STR and behaviors in STRs and that they feel they've got a balanced handle on bad behaviors that can sometimes occur in short-term rentals, and that the LCPA would be furthering the policies that they've put in place and agreed to by reallocating just a small number of permits from residential into mixed use, and that it will better serve visitors, improve economic development, and just all around be a positive change in their perspective.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranga.
Thank you. On April 30th, I had a meeting with Don Schmitz, Jaime Murillo, and my executive assistant, Nadine Ruiz. I had discussed with Commissioner Harmon and the meeting, expertise on file.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Chair. On Monday, the May 5th, at 4:00 PM, for about 20 minutes, I talked to Jaime Murillo, Deputy of City Planning at the City of Newport Beach, and Representative Don Schmitz. They were in agreement with the suggested modification. They kind of talked about the third part of amendment, the short-term lodging, the country club permit amendment, some of the cleanup of the IP, kind of went more into details of the short-term lodging piece. You know, this was a balanced approach, talked about them staying within the max cap. They have added a staff to enforcement. They feel like they have gotten rid of bad operators up to this point. They have gotten far with a lot of that cleanup. And he said, they said this increases the cap but just reallocates permits, same from single use to mixed use. The program doesn't require it on hosted CDY except for the island, because I asked him sort of to clarify, you know, the hosted versus unhosted. But he said it very proactive. I can't, and there's 24/7 contact for enforcement, so they feel like they have it all under control. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the Board of Expartes? Seeing none, I'll take it out to public comment. So do we have any people sign up for a public comment on this item?
Yes, we have about nine people signed up to speak, and we have Jaime Murillo here in person as well as Don Schmitz.
Great. And if you can just turn, yeah, there we go. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, members of the Commission. My name is Jaime Murillo. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Development for the City of Newport Beach. Before I begin, I do have our consultant, Don Schmitz, with us today, as well as our senior planner, David Lee, on Zoom, available only for questions, no comments or presentations.
Great, thank you very much.
So for a presentation, you just need about maybe eight minutes, and then if I can reserve or get an additional five minutes for rebuttal after if needed.
Sure.
Great, thank you so much. First off, I just want to thank your staff. They've been great working on these three amendments, especially Chloe and Amrita. They've worked very collaboratively with staff in working through these issues and including the development of those suggested modifications. And so just for the record, I want to be clear, we're in full support of the suggested modifications presented by staff. Chloe did a great job with her presentation, and so out of respect for your time, I'm not going to go through each of the parts in detail, but I did want to spend a little bit of time on short-term lodging, because I know that's an important topic for the Commission and it's an important topic for the city as well. Next slide, please. So Newport Beach has a lot of history with short-term lodging, but also visitor accommodations. And Newport Beach, it really started off in the early 1900s as a second-home vacation community, and it's grown over the years, but visitor accommodations is a recognized priority visitor-serving use in the city's Certified Coastal Land Use Plan. We have arrived for a wide variety of accommodations, as you can see on the slide. We have over 470 campsites, over 4,000 hotel motel rooms. rooms ranging from lower, moderate, and higher-cost, uh, accommodations, uh, but we also have a cap, as Chloe mentioned, of fifteen hundred and fifty permits, uh, that was established in twenty twenty-two. Uh, short-term lodgings have been embraced, uh, in our community, uh, since the early days, but as they've grown, uh, we did come to the commission and request that cap. Visitor, um, short-term lodging does provide, uh, an affordable form of accommodations compared to your traditional hotel rooms. Uh, they tend to be larger, you can have multiple groups sharing, uh, short-term rental within one home, and, uh, they'll have a kitchen so they can, um, make food together. And so for us, we believe it's an important component of, um, our visitor accommodation, component of our LCP. Uh, next slide. Uh, but as other communities have faced, and as everyone's aware, uh, short-term rentals are commercial use in residential neighborhoods, uh, and with that comes nuisances that you don't typically, uh, expect in a residential neighborhood. And so, you know, in the past, we've dealt with trash issues, like too much trash, not putting them out on the correct day, um, you know, excessive parties and noise, uh, people don't know where to park, they're blocking sidewalks, blocking fire hydrants and such. So over the past two decades, the city has continued to develop our regulations, refine them, uh, and really kind of tighten the screws down to kind of eliminate the bad operators, uh, look for unpermitted short-term rentals. We now have a proactive code enforcement program where we have dedicated code enforcement staff, uh, we have a twenty-four-hour hotline where, uh, anyone can report issues and they quickly get resolved. Uh, but, and to kind of put it together, so I think we finally hit kind of a balanced approach in the management of our short-term rental program. Uh, next slide. Uh, and so kind of getting back to the amendments before you today, um, you know, the, the standard review is really our certified coastal land use plan, and I just wanted to highlight this one policy, it's two-point-three-three dash six, and it just states that we shall continue to issue short-term lodging permits for the rental of dwelling units as a means of providing lower-cost visitor accommodations, while continuing to prevent conditions leading to increased demand for city services and adverse impacts in residential areas and coastal resources. Uh, next slide. And so that's really the essence of our amendment, is to do just that. We're not looking to increase the cap at all, uh, and with the suggested mod that's proposed by staff, in no case can any more permits beyond the fifteen hundred and fifty permits, uh, be issued. But it's really a slight adjustment to reallocate seventy-five units from those residential neighborhoods into the mixed-use neighborhoods, which are really commercial, um, districts with housing allowances, and so it's a more appropriate use in the mixed-use zones than the traditional residential neighborhoods. Um, they're currently prohibited, and that was, I think inadvertently prohibited in two thousand and ten as part of a zoning code update, so we do have a number of, um, nonconforming permits already in the mixed-use districts, and so those will kind of be accounted for in this cap, uh, the seventy-five cap in the mixed-use. Uh, and then the second objective is to really support our mixed-use districts. We have really cool, um, mixed-use neighborhoods, um, Balboa Island and Canary Village, McFadden Square area. Uh, on the slide, you can see some of the newer developments on the top and middle, uh, pictures there. Um, they're newer, they're approved by the Coastal Commission, but the commercial components on those lower levels, they do struggle, um, the proprietors struggle to keep tenants. And that lower right-hand picture, that's a restaurant that it just continues to turn over since I've been in the city, I've been there twenty years. Um, so we really think this is an opportunity to kind of re-energize those mixed-use districts, uh, and bring in more customers that are constantly turning over, that are more likely to visit the cafes and coffee shops in those same districts that are within, uh, a walk-in proximity. Uh, next slide. And this exhibit here just shows in brown the current extent of where short-term rentals are allowed within the city, and the shading in blue and orange, those are the mixed-use districts that, um, there are, it's subject of this amendment. As you can see, it's just a minor, um, adjustment to where they can be approved. Uh, next slide. And then just really quick, jumping to part B, this is the country club. As Chloe mentioned, this amendment really only affects the tennis and pickleball component of the country club, which is outlined in yellow. Uh, next slide. And the amendment's really just dealing with the legislative approvals. Uh, back in two thousand and thirteen, both the Coastal Commission and the city approved, uh, a redevelopment plan to expand the tennis club. Uh, the developer hasn't carried that forward yet, and they want to make a few changes, uh, to further add more hotel rooms, increasing visitor accommodations, as well as, um, add a number of pickleball, uh, courts, which is extremely popular nowadays. Um, but again, this is just legislative approvals. The development of the project will require the processing of a future coastal development permit, and which case we'll go through and do a detailed analysis for consistency with our certified LCP. Uh, next slide. And so that concludes my presentation, and just to reiterate, we're in full agreement with the suggested mods. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I know how powerful the pickleball lobby can be, so glad to see you're accommodating them. Um, all right, so do we have, oh yeah, we, so we have other, uh, members of the public here to comment, so I'll turn it back to Chris to call up those, uh, members of the public.
Don Schmitz, did you wish to speak?
No.
All right, okay. And then, uh, so we'll start with, uh, all right, everyone's on Zoom, uh, we'll start with Denise Oberman, followed by Noah Suarez-Sikes, and then April Strong. Uh, give us a second as we promote you as panelists. Denise Oberman, I see that you're being promoted right now. When you're able to, please unmute and begin.
Am I unmuted at your end?
Uh, yes, we can hear you.
Great, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, uh, commissioners and coastal staff, uh, we really appreciate your hearing of the subject to modify the city's, uh, short-term rental current policy that's in the current LCP. Um, I wanted to just confirm whether the, whether the staff had received my written comments, as you had indicated for, are you able to readily determine? I won't be redundant if the commission has received those.
I'm not sure if Chloe, if you're available, if you have, if you know we've received, um, Ms. Oberman's comments. I would encourage you to just go ahead with your comments, Ms. Oberman.
Very good.
It's always good to repeat.
Sure, okay. Uh, first of all, I wanted to say that, uh, I appreciate, uh, the commission and the commission's staff, uh, holding firm with the maximum number of short-term rental permits, and just wanted to clarify that the intent was for that fifteen fifty number to be relative to the entire city, recognizing that the preponderance of the units and the concentration sits in the coastal zone. So that's just, uh, I'm not proposing that there be more or less. I think going with the existing cap that, that staff pointed out has been developed over so many years and has been so vetted is fine, but I am going to, um, ask that there is some, uh, policy or provision such that there is equity. The seventy, the relocation of seventy-five of those fifteen fifty STRs from residential to the target mixed-use area will impact entirely the coastal zone that's already heavily impacted. So I would ask that there, um, would be some discussion and consideration to, to have, provide for equity. So whatever mixed-use allocation occurs, or relocation occurs, that there would be corresponding reduction with the, of residential permits within the coastal zone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, next is Noah Suarez-Sikes, April Strong, and then Gina Cruz. Uh, Noah Suarez-Sikes.
Fantastic. All right. Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Noah Suarez-Sikes. I'm an organizer for Better Neighbors L.A., a coalition of hosts, tenants, housing activists, and community members who conduct data analysis and research on the short-term rental industry, seeking to regulate short-term rentals to preserve long-term housing. BNLA opposes part A of the city's LCPA because it will make overnight accommodations in the city even more expensive without providing any mitigation that benefits low-cost and overnight accommodations in the coastal zone. The amendment, as you heard, creates seventy-five additional permits for STRs in various mixed-use coastal areas and limits them to property owners with twenty or more units. Corporate STR hosts are likely the only entities capable of meeting this standard, and since there's no limit on the amount of permits any of these corporate owners can operate, this allows corporations to turn entire neighborhoods into de facto hotels without going through an approval process that mitigates the impacts of putting an expensive hotel into a coastal neighborhood. Data shows that less than five percent of Airbnb STR listings in Newport Beach qualify as low-cost overnight accommodations. If Newport Beach had proposed to construct a seventy-five to three-hundred-room hotel in the coastal zone, this commission would likely have imposed commissions to, or conditions to ensure that those rooms be affordable, or else require in-lu mitigation. Corporatizing the short-term rental market is likely to increase the cost of STRs in Newport Beach, and yet this commission will not be able to impose any in-lu fees to offset that impact. The commission can require the city to allow hosted-only STRs, which is the only way to truly keep the price of STRs down. Prioritizing corporate STRs over long-term housing will also likely lead to housing cost increases. This could have severe consequences for Newport Beach. The number of corporate hosts in the city increased by thirty-two percent from January twenty nineteen to July twenty twenty-four, and STRs account for a whopping six-point-seven percent of the entire city's housing stock. This loss of housing stock to STRs that provide no significant increase to affordable coastal access should not be approved by the commission. BNLA urges the Coastal Commission to deny part A of this LCPA as it threatens residential communities and long-term housing while also failing to ensure affordable access to the coast. Instead, we advocate for true home sharing and hosted-only rentals, which effectively balances affordable coastal access with housing needs for residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is April Strong, followed by Gina Cruz, and then Adam Leverens. April Strong, I see that you're joining via phone, you should be able to unmute now. Uh, April Strong, you should be able to unmute by dialing star six if you need to. There you go.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you for taking my call and my comment, I appreciate it and all the work you're doing. Um, first, I'm just curious as to the Lido area specifically chosen for this, um, short-term rental, uh, i- in this specific area uptick. Um, I have many friends and acquaintances who would likely be resistant to this uptick. I have a large Airbnb right next door to my own home. I've lived here in this house, um, going on thirty years, and they rebuilt it in twenty twenty, um, and have been using it as a short-term rental, and, um, it's, it's very problematic on a very regular basis. So I know there was a comment made by the speaker, um, about having balance in Newport Beach and well-maintained short-term rental behavior, and I strongly disagree. I think that is, uh, still a big issue, and with, you know, several friends and acquaintances in the Lido area, I don't know that they would love that. So the issue I'm finding repeating with our city is the gaping lack of notification with regard to keeping our communities informed of proposals and building plans. So I guess my comment is mainly about getting better communication from our city and having that be implemented somehow into this scenario, as far as making sure that the, the citizens and the community members in the Lido area are more, made more aware of this plan's implementation and the impact it could have in their area. So that's my concern. Thank you. That's, I'm, I'm done. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Uh, next Gina Cruz, followed by Adam Leverens, and then Michelle Silver. Uh, Gina Cruz, you should be able to unmute now, I see that you're also on a phone. And you can dial star six to unmute. Gina Cruz, there you go.
Hi, good afternoon, commissioners, commissioners, and thank you for taking my call. First of all, um, I'd like to thank everybody for all their input on this. I've been actively involved in issues with STRs with both the city council and the Coastal Commission previously. So one of the questions that pops up to me now is, why now change seventy-five permits over into mixed-use zone? It was never suggested previously to do that, to alleviate issues that residents had from STRs, which we know does cause a lot of negative impact. So that's one of my first questions. The second is, isn't the reason that we have such a large amount of short-term rental permits in Newport Beach is to make it affordable accommodation and offer, you know, options to expensive hotels? So when I look at some of the slides that we've just shown, and one of the comments that was made was some business units which had residents, um, that would potentially be turned into a, a STR unit, they weren't successful. So are we now in a position where STRs become a get-out-of-bad-business practice for the city, and anybody who's not been able to successfully build their own business now takes away from the fifteen, the five-hundred-or-so people on a waiting list for permits? So I think there's also issues with what happens, I think I read it correctly, a per, an entity has to have twenty units to be able to apply for some of these seventy-five. Well, let's say an entity does get twenty permits, and a couple of years down the line has violations and loses a couple of permits, where's the provision for what should happen? Because now they don't meet the thresholds which were set up for going for the permits in the first place? Well, that makes sense. The other option is, what if one person gets seventy-five permits? That's potentially twenty percent, if my math is correct, of permits throughout the city, and that's I'll just finish my point. That makes that person very influential on any forward short-term rental issues. So I'd just like to say, please decline it and put it back to the city and the residents and the people on the waiting list for the permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Adam Leverens, Michelle Silver, and then Jim Maloney. Adam Leverens.
Uh, good afternoon, am I back?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, good to see you all again. Um, in the, in the time I've been attending your meetings, I've, I've sensed how very important housing issues are to you folks, and, and even today during the legislative report, you know, that was conveyed. I hope that you'll share some of my concerns related to this agenda item. Um, to make regulating short-term rentals easier, the city of Newport Beach has expressed that they need to have a minimum of twenty units in some zones. It, it's troubling to me how frequently, when the city wants to make something easier, it benefits large, uh, private enterprises rather than small private enterprises. And as Ms. Seifert mentioned, uh, and our staff materials say, coastal cannot require an LCP to include housing policies and programs, but also I see that you do make suggestions. It's very much appreciated that the fifteen hundred and fifty-unit cap has remained. Um, I ask for consideration of other suggested modifications, that some percentage of short-term rentals should be set as host-only. The city has indicated that it has no data on those numbers, that's in the addendum with the staff materials. That's a very important thing. I, I hope I have conveyed to you folks how important housing issues are to me. An additional thing that I would say is that, uh, if they're gonna, if you're going to approve these twenty units, make some of the onsite units available for management and maintenance people that live there. Newport's transitioning into a place where all the people that work here on the lower tiers can't be here. This compounds traffic, air quality, parking problems. There are changes that could be made to this to make it much better. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Michelle Silver, and then Jim Maloney, and then Maura O'Neill, we're not able to see you, so if you are in the meeting, please raise your hand, Maura O'Neill. But right now, we have Michelle Silver. I see that you're on the phone, and you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, as stated, my name is Michelle Silver, and I'm a forty-seven-year resident on Balboa Peninsula, who is extremely concerned with our present city council decisions. Um, in particular, this item, which includes twelve A, the short-term rental, B, and C that's before you presently, is only one of a number of projects that could adversely affect our quality of life here in Newport Beach, especially here on Balboa Peninsula. I'm requesting that the Coastal Commission not only investigate this particular item, which is which is multiple, very closely, but also other proposals that have incurred possibly lawsuits recently because residents have decided that this is the only method left to try and prohibit numerous projects which will cost millions of taxpayers money and also have long-term negative effects. I've been a very strong supporter of our Coastal Commission and the work that you accomplish protecting and keeping our California coast and communities. I'm just requesting assistance in carefully examining not only this proposal, which is basically being considered in one particular area of Newport Beach. Thank you very much. I appreciate you listening.
Thank you. And then Jim Maloney.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Chair, and fellow Commissioners and Commission staff. My name is Jim Maloney. I too am a resident, longtime resident of Newport Beach, Balboa Island, and I am also very keenly interested in the short-term lodging rules. I know the city hosts many meetings with holders of short-term lodging permits and other concerned citizens in the neighborhoods. I too echo the concern that all of this wasn't really disclosed to residents. I applaud Jaime and the staff for doing their job, but I would like to ask that maybe more transparency and more disclosure be given to local residents about changes like this, which impact us all. We sort of have to find out about meetings like this on our own through discovery. The other thing I'll chime in on here before I run out of time, I got one minute left, is I do think the concentration of short-term lodging in the local coastal zone is a little more tricky than perhaps described. It sort of is described as, this will be better for everybody because there'll be a lot of concentrated short-term lodging in the zone, and we'll be able to more easily police it. But one of the things that came to my attention, because I focused on the map in which the concentrated areas are proposed, it seems there's a lot of larger private developers that have units in these locations on the peninsula that are not suitable for sale. So now they're sort of recalibrating and using these units, perhaps are hoping to use these units for short-term lodging. So I think a lot of these changes may be designed, whether intentionally or unintentionally, but without disclosure, to benefit certain large property developers and not the average citizen, resident, taxpayer. And I know the Coastal Commission is very concerned about things like that, so I thought I'd just bring that to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm seeing no other speakers, so Chair Cummings.
All right, thank you very much. Maybe what we'll do is we'll have the representative from the city come up and provide the five-minute rebuttal, then we'll bring it back to staff for any comments from what we heard from public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board for any questions and further comments. So we'll turn it back to the city of Newport Beach.
Yes, thanks, Chair Cummings. So there's a number of comments made. So with regards to the notification with specific to Part A, this was initiated by our City Council. We then held public hearings with our Planning Commission, and we brought it back to our City Council for subsequent public hearings. As part of the outreach, the city's manager does put out a city manager's update that goes out to a wide swath of our population in Newport Beach. In there, she does highlight kind of the items that are going to be addressed at council meetings. We also have an opportunity for members of the public to sign up for any upcoming hearings or even information on planning or zoning changes. You just sign up, and then you'll automatically receive notifications, and so I'm happy to help any of the speakers if they want to contact me later directly. I can help them sign up for that. With regards to the comments about affecting quality of life on Balboa Peninsula, you can see on that slide, the peninsula already has a heavy amount of short-term lodging, and it's already allowed almost everywhere except in those mixed-use districts. And so, again, the objective is really to lessen the burden on those pure residential districts and move them into the mixed-use districts where these uses are more compatible with the surrounding commercial uses. With regards to the comments made by Better Neighbors Los Angeles, I think it's just really important to identify that this amendment isn't seeking to increase the number of permits, which are a lot of the impacts that Better Neighbors brought up in terms of reduced housing. In fact, you know, with or without this amendment, the number of short-term permits remains the same. Reducing the number of permits would actually have an inverse effect on the affordability of visitor accommodations, because there'd be less supply of accommodations, thereby increasing the demand and increasing the cost of hotel rates in the city. I think the comment about converting substandard commercial space, again, I just want to reiterate, this would not allow for any underperforming commercial suites to be converted to short-term lodging. It only affects the residential units which are above those commercial suites, but the idea is to get more customer turnover in those districts themselves. That would eventually help support those struggling commercial businesses down below. In terms of the 20 property requirement, that was something that the City Council felt was important as we're providing this new opportunity for short-term lodging in the mixed-use districts. It's also an opportunity to hold those permit holders more accountable. For the city and our code enforcement staff, we'd had a lot of great success working with larger property owners and property managers in dealing with nuisances for short-term lodging than we have with like the individual property owners. I think that concludes my comments.
All right, thank you very much. I'd like to then turn it over to staff to see if there's any comments or clarifications based on what we heard from public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the city did cover a number of the points that we would have made ourselves, but just a couple items I want to mention. As far as the noticing goes, that noticing we did determine was sufficient to file the LCP amendments with us, so we did determine that that local process was adequate. And then, I also just wanted to make a clarification about the minimum ownership requirement that is a part of this LCP amendment. That provision, just to be clear, it only applies to the 75 units that would be transferred into the mixed-use districts. The remainder of the program isn't subject to that same requirement, so just wanted to make that clarification, and we're available for questions.
All right, thank you very much. So we'll bring it back to the Commission. Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks. I have a question for staff, which is, I think it's like 37,000 residential units in Newport Beach or something like that. Do I have that correct? What's the number of total residential units in Newport, and then the number that's in the coastal zone?
Okay. I don't have the number in the coastal zone, but city-wide, it's approximately 45,000.
45,000, okay. Do we have any estimation of what they are in the coastal zone? Because is, or within the zones that are allowable for short-term rentals, like because it's a concentration, so do we have that?
I apologize. I don't have the total number in the coastal zone.
Okay. Well, okay, the reason I'm asking this question is because my calculation was around 4% of residential units are allowable for short-term rentals. Is that, but Better Neighbors said 6%. And I was just, both of those are higher than we usually account for in most cities. And so, do you know what that percentage, or are you just working off the cap?
Yeah, I'm currently just working off the cap. You know, when we established the cap, those numbers were reviewed and kind of discussed at the Coastal Commission hearing at that time.
Oh, I remember.
Yeah. And so, for us, we were grateful to actually establish that cap, because I think at the time, we weren't really sure, and I think there's kind of a lot of support for short-term lodging.
Right.
But I think for Newport Beach, again, we are a tourist destination as well, and so we believe we are at a balanced limit, and we're able to manage those impacts.
So for me, and I can't remember, I think I might have voted against that original STR permit, mostly because the concentration of the STRs here is, this is one of the only places I think we see where they totally exclude single-family residential zoning for the whole city, which basically takes the whole burden of short-term rentals and puts it on to the renter class, basically, as opposed to the owning class in general. And I think that that is, you know, it's one of those things, and then that's where we have the most pressure in terms of that, you know, housing cost. And so, if you were to, and it's interesting that LA neighbors basically said like, hey, if you were to basically build a hotel that was 75 units or 1,000 units, we would have mitigations for these issues around affordability. We would really have a lot of mitigations and issues if that hotel that replaced 1,500 houses or whatever actually was replacing a whole neighborhood, right? We would have all kinds of, so this short-term rental ordinances in general have really snuck up on us in terms of, we have, you know, through, there's no sequel review for the loss of housing there. There hasn't been in the state of California, and likewise in this case. And so I'm just saying, it's like, it's just one of those problems that we have, and, you know, and this isn't maybe for you, I'm a little bit messaging out there beyond, which is like, the legislature is hard on wanting to create housing in the coastal zone, but is totally mute on the loss of housing in the coastal zone at these rates. I mean, this is really, this is pretty substantial, and if that's, to me, something we are, I'm hoping that we see something addressed at the state level at some point, because this is a lot of pressure on what is mostly a renting and rental market of the part of the city, whereas the single-family zoning has no pressure in this conversion or this issue. That being said, I see why it is you guys are talking about trying to like, in this case, actually sort of spread out that impact to a broader part of that impacted zone, which I kind of have a problem with. I get that part. I'm going to go to the 20 owners, 20-unit owners versus what if five, what's the difference between 20 and five? Because even if you have five units, you know, you're under a lot of pressure from your local staff. I see why your council said, well, it's for 20 units, because, you know, they're chasing these things down all over the place, and sort of the larger owners, you can kind of hammer them a little easier maybe, because you can find them better, and they have more to lose, I guess, in this case. But five units would also be substantial in my community and in many communities. If you own five units, you know, you're doing, that's a lot to manage, and you are, you have a stake in this. So do you have any understanding of why they went to 20 units as that threshold? Is it something smaller?
No, I mean, that's a good question. That was, you know, discussed at length at the Planning Commission meeting. Our Planning Commission actually removed that standard, and then when we went back to council, they added that standard back. So again, from the council's perspective, it was just all about holding property owners accountable.
So the planning, your Planning Commission removed that standard, and the City Council put it back, is what I heard you just say?
Correct.
Okay, I appreciate that. Those are my comments for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Harmon.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Yeah, I'll be brief. I want to associate myself very much with the comments from Commissioner Wilson around the challenges of short-term rentals and the implications for coastal communities in particular. I'm just very much aligned with the points that he put out substantively as to this item, specifically as it pertains to the short-term rentals. I agree that it seems to make good sense to move some of these permits into the mixed-use zone, and frankly, I think I would like to see a number higher than 75, to the extent that that's feasible and this is successful. I think it's, it could potentially be reasonable to increase that over time, depending on the needs of the community. I too shared the concerns about how that 20-unit threshold was reached. I hear you that that was a point of contention in the community. It's of interest to me, but generally, I think that while this number is higher, the 1,550 is much higher than I would like to see, that's really not what's before us today. And as to the substance of the amendment, it seems to make sense to me. Thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Commissioner Nadav, then Commissioner Hart.
I had a question about hosted versus unhosted short-term rentals. We've certainly had experience in other areas of the coast where hosted short-term rentals tend to be more affordable, and other jurisdictions are able to distinguish between hosted and unhosted. And when we're trying to get to the affordability factor, I was wondering, why isn't, why don't you have a hosted component here? And I guess also, in going to affordability, the fact that so many are, you know, these are all concentrated in the narrow strip along the water, seems like if you spread them out more through the community, then it would be more affordable. So I think it's the affordability concern that I have, and particularly about hosted versus unhosted.
Yeah, so actually, I did pull up some data from AirDNA recently, and it did show about 2% of our permits are hosted, a large majority are not. We looked at that issue during our last amendment as well, and, you know, it was determined that hosted worked well for Newport Island, it's a smaller part of the Balboa Peninsula, but generally, it was determined that unhosted is, you know, again, we have a long history of allowing short-term rentals, and they are an important part of our economy and our visitor-serving uses, and it's consistent with our CLUP that encourages them. In terms of the affordability, you know, not 100% sure hosted would be cheaper, because it reduces availability and the number of rooms and opportunities. But what's before us today is really not changing our overall program that we have adopted and have been implementing and have been managing now for a couple of decades. It's really just trying to shift that reallocation. And, oh, the other question about concentration, I think ultimately what we're finding is, these rentals tend to be where people want to go, right? They want to be near the beach, they want to be near the restaurants and the commercial districts of our coastal zone. We do allow them outside the coastal zone as well, but we find naturally, you know, they're attracted to the coastal zone.
I did want to associate myself with Commissioner Harmon's comments, that it does seem like a good direction to move, try and move more into commercial and walkable neighborhoods, and I hope it works out.
So Commissioner Hart, then Commissioner Escalante.
Yeah, I just, you know, it was an interesting point that Commissioner Wilson made that I hadn't really thought of in reading this. And, you know, I want to just start with an understanding, as it's stated in the addendum, that we're not here to consider a brand-new limit, et cetera. This is an amendment, right? So we're pretty limited in, what we're looking at really is just the movement, the removal of the group from the one area to this mixed-use area. That's essentially what's before us right now, right? And that's it?
Yes, that's correct.
And in the mixed-use area, Carl, are those long-term, because I noticed that one of the pieces of correspondence said these are long-term rentals. Are they currently long-term rentals, or what, or are they vacant, or what's the situation there? Or maybe the city would like to comment on that?
Yeah, that may be a question for the city. I don't think we had any data on sort of the occupancy of those units now.
A lot of exercise is good.
Yeah, it's good. You stretch.
Yeah.
Yeah, so currently, they're not allowed to be used for short-term rentals, so anything 30 days or less, it's prohibited. We do have a number of non-conforming ones that had a permit before we prohibited them in the mixed-use districts, so those are still out there. There's about 30 overall in the various mixed-use districts. In terms of occupancy, you know, I did, when working with staff, look at how many were available for rent, just going off Trulia, and I found a total of six units for rent.
I'm sorry, how many?
Six, available for rent. So I think the occupancy is...
How many units are there? Like, this is 75 out of a, do you know the total?
In the two mixed-use districts that this would apply to... In the two mixed-use districts that this would apply to, I do have it, just give me a minute. 265 lots, and within those lots, there's about 234 units.
234 units, and of those only six were available for rent, based on your study.
Correct. But that, that's just looking at Trulia at a point in time.
Yeah, moment in time. I mean, I'm, I have to say, I'm just very concerned about the number, which isn't before us, in Newport Beach, and how much it costs to live there and just the lack of affordable housing. So my concern is that, you know, we're once again going to be digging into what, maybe in these mixed-use areas, housing is more affordable, I don't know. But I think you're hearing a lot of concern from many of us as we learn more and more about the impacts of short-term rentals on housing affordability, particularly in the South Coast. It's just, it's really a big deal. So I, I mean, I have a lot of concerns about this, but I understand we're limited in our consideration today.
Commissioner Escalante.
Thank you, Chair. And of course, I think, once again, I align myself pretty strongly with Commissioner Wilson on this. And I mentioned, you know, to, to the city, that access in general to Newport Beach is just, is really, really tough. I actually have personally never touched Newport Beach sand, never been on the beach of Newport Beach, or, or actually in any of the channels. And not even as a commissioner, really. I mean, I've been to the city council and stuff, but it's, it's because, you know, it's easy to kind of walks around and get to know the places where we meet when we're able to stay there. And I think that Newport Beach has a chronic low-cost accommodation issue and access. So I hope that, you know, you guys keep this in mind and, and every time that we revisit that, that we can keep on having this conversation with this focus that it's about access and now it's obviously about housing. So obviously with this item, I think that we all agree that there's not much we can do, although, you know, maybe in honor of me always being the no vote, I might, I might do that, but we'll see. Thank you.
All right, are there any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson.
I guess my concern, my main concern is that in this moment or in this decision, we're talking about moving 75 or, or the potential. My concern is the sort of the balance between is, what's the impact to the residents that will be displaced from that movement within the mixed-use zones? And will we actually be creating long-term residency in the zone from which there, those, those permits would move from? Or would they remain unoccupied or as vacation homes? Or what would, what would actually happen? Would, would we actually see a decrease in, in the number of available units and affordability within Newport Beach? Is, I don't really have a good feeling about that necessarily in this, in this case. And it's just a really, it's just like a concern, again, just because the numbers are so high and so, and, yeah. And so we've had some times walking around Newport Beach, and Justin and I have for sure. It's a, it's a, it's a great little beach community and there's definitely people live there. It's not just tourists. I mean, there are plenty of locals in the establishments that we went to and, and with in on the beach front there. I mean, it's not, I, I don't know. I mean, yeah, I just have some pretty strong concerns about this, this movement. So, thanks.
Through the chair, I just, I just want to remind us all the context in which we're making this decision today, that you all are making this decision. Because these are really excellent points and things this commission struggles with a lot, the effect of short-term rentals on housing. And here we are limited to just what this amendment is looking, is seeking to do and just in the context of the LUP and the consistency with the LUP policies. And there are, you know, we are, do not have housing policies in this LUP, as we don't in others. And I, and I just have to remind us that we need to be focused on the consistency with those LUP policies as we're thinking through how, how to approach this amendment.
Through the chair, in that discussion, the question around whether the ownership is, how does that fit into the LUC policy, the 20-unit ownership threshold?
They're including it in their IP. We, we looked at it for, you know, consistency with LUP policies and didn't find any inconsistencies with those LUP policies, which is why we're recommending that you approve that particular LCP amendment.
Okay, I appreciate that.
All right, any further questions from commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I do have a couple of questions, I think probably directed to the city, if you want to approach the podium again. And I do know that we are limited in terms of how we can make decisions on this item, but I do have some questions and I do have some concerns aligned with my fellow commissioners as well. So I'm just, the first one is, I'm just wondering, has that 1,550 cap been reached already in terms of the, the short-term rental permits that are available?
Essentially, yes. We currently have 1,529 total citywide, but we have hundreds on the waiting list. And so the issue is, it takes time for our revenue staff to go through the new applications and go through the eligibility. We also have a number that are in the stages of either closure or revocation, and so there's due process, we have to kind of get through that. So that's why it appears as we're under, but we're essentially at capacity.
Because I guess I'm kind of curious how this is going to be implemented in terms of transferring those permits? I mean, is the idea that they're going to be sunset dates on certain permits that will allow them to then transfer and be held within this kind of bucket that will go towards someone who owns 20 units or more? I'm just trying to understand how you guys are operationalizing this, because I think that even for some of our communities, I mean, if you're essentially moving permits out of one, you know, person's hands into another, I mean, we always get concerned with people suing us over takings and all sorts of things around that. So I'm just curious, like, how is this going to be implemented?
That's a good question. So, yeah, essentially, the idea was we would have from one bucket, two separate buckets. A lot of the concerns we had from our residents was, as we start filling the mixed-use bucket, we're still waiting for the residential permits to come down the other bucket. And there might be a temporary period where we exceed 1,550 permits. But with the suggested mod that staff is recommending, the additional language basically caps us at 1,550 total at any one time. So through attrition, that residential cap will go down and then we'll slowly fill that mixed-use bucket, but at no time will we ever be over 1,550.
Okay, that's helpful, because I, it's just like, this is going to take time for implementation, is I guess what I'm getting at. So thank you. Within that zone, I'm just curious, so when you say that it's 20 units or more in terms of the operator, is that, do they have to, is 20 units or more within a single building? Or do they have to own 20 or more properties throughout the community as a whole?
Properties.
20 or more properties throughout the community?
Right.
Okay, that's helpful. Yeah, it's, it's, okay, I guess this will be my last question. Are there any, I guess, what's the maximum number of units within any given building that's within that smaller footprint now? Because I guess what I'm concerned about, which has been brought up as well, is, you know, around displacement of tenants. Because let's say, for example, there's somebody who owns a building with 10 units, it's full, they get the permit, and then 30-day notices to quit for everybody who lives in that building. So I'm just trying to better understand how this is going to roll out and actually protect the tenants who are currently in those buildings potentially from displacement. Because I think to Commissioner Wilson's point, you know, when these houses in these areas, the single-family homes are being used for short-term rentals, when, when those are no longer allowed to be short-term rentals, the likelihood is that somebody's going to buy it, it's just going to be their second home and it's going to sit empty. There may be the possibility of a long-term rental, but in general, it just doesn't seem likely. So I'm just curious, what, like, how many buildings, like, what are the, what are the, in terms of the buildings within that area, how many units does the largest building have? And, you know, what kind of protections are there for tenants to be displaced should this move forward?
Good question. I'm not sure which would be the largest building, but there's definitely some buildings, very few that have, you know, 20 or more in one. But most of them are, like, you remember that slide, like, live-work units? So they're one unit above a commercial space. So that, that's probably a majority of the types of units in the mixed-use zones. In the older areas, maybe there's like five or six units above a bigger commercial block, but very few, like, larger buildings. I think when the city was looking at it, the impacts to housing remained the same. Because again, we're not adding more permits. You know, the idea is if a permit comes out of the residential zones, and again, we don't allow them in the single families anymore, they're only allowed in the multifamily and R2. So a lot of the short-term rentals actually are like in an older apartment complex. So I think when we looked at it, the impact would be the same, you know? We might lose a unit here, but we gain it back in the other district. So it's kind of a wash, I think, is from our perspective.
Okay, that's helpful. All right, well, I don't want to delay us any further. I think that there is an, you know, we should maybe use this as a case study for further conversations around policy as it pertains to short-term rentals and the conversion of, I mean, in this case too, I mean, if it's not short, if it's not single-family homes are getting converted, it's actually the housing that would be going towards workers. Like, if it's, if we're talking about apartment complexes being converted to short-term rentals, that's even more problematic. And I think that as the state has been pushing the housing element and the, the construction of more mixed-use residential, the concern that I've had even as it relates to Santa Cruz is, you know, are we building all this housing and then it gets converted to short-term rentals? Because then we're actually not solving our goal. We built the units, but then the units aren't even being used for housing. And so I just have those concerns. But given what's before us today, I'm supportive of the staff's recommendation and what's been done, but I do think that we may need to start having some deeper conversations, especially if, you know, you have large apartment buildings converting the majority to short-term rentals, and then it's like, well, what's the difference between that and a hotel? And do we need to have, you know, do we need to come up with new definitions for large complexes where the majority of the units are short-term rentals? So I think it's another discussion for another day. But with that, I'm hoping that we can entertain a motion on this item. Okay. Commissioner Oranga.
I'm going to actually second the motion, but let you all know, if it gets to me and there's no, no votes by the time it gets to me, I'll, I'll take the burden of that signal. And it's not a recommendation that anyone else do so. Thank you.
Okay. And just for clarification, there's six motions on this item, so.
And I, and I.
Commissioner, yeah.
Commissioner, I, sorry, through the chair, I would just like to clarify that the first motion is to reject the IP as submitted. So even if you are not supportive of the amendment, then a no vote on the IP would, on the first motion, would actually mean you're trying to approve it as submitted, without any suggested modifications. I just wanted to clarify, because sometimes commissioners want to vote against the staff recommendation, and it would be counterproductive to do that for the first motion.
Commissioner Oranga.
Before I begin, I just want to state that this is their planned community, and that's why they're bringing in this amendment. So I have no issues with that. Okay. I move that the commission reject Part A of Implementation Plan Amendment, LCP5-MPB-24-00041 for the city of Newport as submitted and recommend a yes vote.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Wilson, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga? Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Can I be the symbolic no? No, not yet? Yes. Yes. Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, we'll move on to the second motion. I'll turn back to Commissioner Oranga.
No, no, I see what you want to do. I move that the commission certify Part A of Implementation Plan Amendment, number LCP5-MPB-2400041 for the city of Newport Beach, if modified, for staff recommendation. I recommend a yes vote.
Second. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Wilson, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. Turn to Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga?
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Wilson, no. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is nine yes, one no.
Okay, that moves us on to the third motion. I'll turn back to Commissioner Oranga for the motion on this item.
I move that the commission reject Part B of Implementation Plan Amendment, number LCP5-MPB-24-00041 for the city of Newport Beach as submitted and recommend a yes vote.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Wilson, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn to Ms. Miller for the roll call.
Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga?
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yep.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, that moves us on to our fourth motion. I'll turn back to Commissioner Oranga.
I move that the commission certify Part B of Implementation Plan Amendment, number LCP-MPB-24-00041 for the city of Newport Beach, if modified, for the staff recommendation. I recommend a yes vote.
Second. So motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Wilson, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn to Ms. Miller for the roll call.
Commissioner Oranga?
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff?
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Okay, that brings us to our fifth motion on this item. I'll turn it back to Commissioner Oranga for the motion.
Okay, for Part C, I move that the commission reject Part C of Implementation Plan, Amendment Number LCP5-MPB-24-00041 for the city of Newport Beach as submitted and recommend a yes vote.
Second. So we have a motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Wilson, maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn it back to Ms. Miller. I'll turn it back to Ms. Miller for the roll call vote.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yep.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni.
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff.
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Chair Cummings.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
Okay, that brings us to the last motion on this item. Turn it back to Commissioner Oranga, the motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the commission certify part C of implementation plan amendment number LCP5-npb-24-00041 for the city of Newport, if modified, by the staff recommendation, recommend a yes vote.
Second, and thank you to the staff for holding the line on that cap. Appreciate that.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Oranga, second by Commissioner Wilson. Maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn to Ms. Miller for the roll call.
Commissioner Aguirre.
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon.
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart.
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni.
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nadoff.
Aye.
Nadoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga.
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson.
Yep.
Wilson, yes. Chair Cummings.
Is that a yes or no?
Yep.
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, thank you very much and send our regards to the pickleball players. And we'll move on from there to our next item. This will be.
So that does take us to item 14F.
Right. 14F, which is application number 5-24-0398, Orange County Transit Authority and Southern California Regional Rail Authority. I'll turn it to our staff for the presentation on this item.
Thank you, and there's a staff PowerPoint on this item to bring up. And Liliana Roman with our Long Beach office is going to do the staff presentation on this matter. Go ahead, Liliana.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Next, we have item W14F, a CDP application from the Orange County Transportation Authority and the Southern California Regional Rail Authority for the demolition of the Mariposa Pedestrian Bridge, demolition of a temporary barrier wall, construction of a new soldier pile catchment wall, and re-establishment of the city's coastal trail on the seaward side of the proposed new catchment wall all along the beach level rail corridor and toe of bluff in the city of San Clemente in Orange County. Next slide, please. Since fall 2021, multiple bluff failures and landslides on privately-owned land have, along with coastal erosion, significantly impacted rail operations along the LA, San Diego, and San Luis Obispo, or also known as LoSan rail corridor, requiring emergency stabilization efforts. OCTA has identified four areas at risk and in need of reinforcement. You heard an overview of those four areas in the prior presentation on the deputy director's report. And this CDP action addresses OCTA's proposal for priority area three and area inland of the railroad tracks. Next slide. The proposed project is mostly on the OCTA railroad right-of-way at the toe of the coastal bluffs parallel to the Pacific Ocean. This includes work on the San Clemente Coastal Trail, a part of the California Coastal Trail that is located within the rail, railroad right-of-way. MetroLink and Amtrak operate passenger rail service through this corridor. Freight lines and the US military also operate here. According to the applicants, this corridor is key to inter-regional travel between San Diego, Orange, and LA counties and is also a strategic rail line for national defense. Next slide. The approximate project site limit depicted on this slide by the black dash line shows ongoing landslide activity on the coastal bluffs above the railroad tracks in the central part of the city. Landslides occurred in November 2019, December 2023, and most recently, January of 2024, which started up slope on private property and then flowed down onto the city's and OCTA's right-of-way. Next slide. The January 2024 landslide caused two spans of the Mariposa Pedestrian Bridge to collapse and the closure of most of the remaining trail between North Beach and Linda Lane Park. The slides also led to temporary closure of the rail corridor due to landslide debris overtopping the railroad tracks. Various emergency actions were taken between January and March 2024 to remove soil from the tracks, grade back the toe of the slope, and construct a temporary containment wall to prevent further landslide debris, debris from impacting the rail corridor. Although the rail corridor was reopened to train traffic, the damage to the coastal trail bridge was catastrophic and the trail in this area has remained closed since that time. Last month, on April 10th, in order to expedite the commencement of work in area three, the executive director approved the removal of the remaining 850-foot section of the Mariposa Pedestrian Bridge as part of ECDP 5-25-0013. This work commenced on April 28th and was completed within a week. The bridge spans were removed with no ground disturbance. Next slide. This CDP serves as follow-up to previously undertaken emergency work and request approval for new work. The scope of the proposed development in this follow-up CDP includes the following six different components. Approval of demolition of the remaining 850, 850-foot section of the Mariposa Pedestrian Bridge, partial removal of the above-grade portions of the temporary soldier pile wall, leaving in place 33, 36-inch diameter below-grade soldier piles, construction of a new soldier pile catchment wall in two sections. One section is a 1,180-foot-long section and that averages about 20 feet in height. And section two, which is a 180-foot length of wall, averaging 16, 17 feet in height. Both sections flanking the Mariposa Bridge access point. Also, in coordination with the city of San Clemente, the applicant proposes to reconstruct the segment of the trail damaged by the January 2024 landslide and reopen this important segment of the coastal trail. The bridge that was damaged and removed will be replaced with an on-grade trail in the railroad right-of-way between the proposed new catchment wall and the railroad tracks. So inland, inland of the railroad tracks. Finally, the project includes revegetation of areas impacted by project construction. Next slide. To address the ongoing geologic hazards posed by the adjacent steep coastal bluffs, the applicant's proposed construction of this long soldier pile catchment wall in the two sections previously described. The applicant has cited the proposed caissons and wall shown here as a yellow dashed line as close to the existing railroad tracks and as is feasible given the needs to accommodate existing city utilities and for construction equipment and access. Compared to the other structural alternatives reviewed and discussed in the staff report, and as conditioned to address impacts to coastal resources, the proposed project is the least environmentally damaging structural alternative. Additionally, the applicant proposes to construct an on-grade trail in the railroad right-of-way between the proposed new catchment wall and the railroad tracks in place of the demolished Mariposa Bridge, shown here on this slide as a tan area for the pedestrian beach trail, thus re-establishing public access along this segment of the coastal trail that has been closed since January 2024. Furthermore, any bluff areas disturbed during construction, shown here in green on the slide, are proposed to be revegetated with appropriate coastal bluff vegetation. Next slide. This slide depicts a typical cross-section of the proposed soldier pile wall and trail. Coastal Act Section 30235 acknowledges that retaining walls and other such structural or hard methods designed to forestall erosion also alter natural landforms and natural shoreline processes. Accordingly, bluff protection is limited to those required to serve coastal-dependent uses or to protect existing structures or public beaches in danger from erosion, provided they are designed to eliminate or mitigate adverse impacts on shoreline sand supply. In addition, the commission has generally interpreted Section 30235 of the Act to require the commission to approve protective devices for existing principal structures in danger from erosion. In this case, the railroad tracks were built in the late 1880s and are considered a pre-coastal structure. Thus, the coastal bluffs in this part of San Clemente have not contributed beach sand supplies for at least the past 140 years. The railroad embankment, railroad embankment protected by rock is a functional barrier that prevents bluff material from reaching the active beach littoral zone. Therefore, the impact to sand supply by the proposed retaining wall inland of the railroad tracks and the rock revetment is not a factor in this case. However, Special Condition Four requires that any excavated material behind the catchment wall be placed at a suitable location on the beach where feasible to facilitate what have otherwise, without the railroad, supply beach sand to San Clemente beaches. Additionally, should the railroad ever be relocated, Special Condition Seven requires removal of the wall and bluff, and the bluff restored such that natural supply of bluff material to the beach can be restored. Next slide. Construction is proposed to occur mainly within the railroad right-of-way with construction staging at the North Beach Public Parking Lot and along the railroad right-of-way. Construction access is proposed utilizing the San Clemente Beach Trail from both the North Beach, from both North Beach at the north end and from San, from Linda Lane at the south end of the project site. These activities may affect beach, public beach access to areas immediately adjacent to construction activities. Construction is estimated to take approximately 34 weeks, about eight months. Special Condition One outlines measures the applicant will need to take to minimize public access impacts. Short-term temporary closures of minor trail segments are necessary, as necessary during the estimated eight-month construction period would be permitted, along with detailed pedestrian detour routes, signage, and timing details. Next slide. The applicant provided a biological resource memo to determine existing environmental conditions and the impacts of the temporary soldier pile wall constructed back in March of 2024 in the vicinity of the January landslide. Most, if not all, of the vegetation within the project footprint was disturbed due to that landslide. The coastal bluff was observed as somewhat degraded due to the presence of both native and non-native plant species. No portion of the site contained resources that rose to the level of Esha. However, an aquatic resources survey identified wetlands in the project area. The proposed construction of the new soldier pile wall on the low end of the bluff face would cause direct impact to these wetland areas, to these areas that the applicant identified as upon the depression, shown here on this slide, as PD, and disturbed wetlands, shown as SS. As outlined in the staff report, these impacts can be found consistent with Coastal Act Section 30233 as incidental public service purpose, provided the impacts are mitigated. Special Condition Five requires the applicant to prepare a wetlands mitigation plan for onsite mitigation, or if onsite mitigation is not feasible, to pay an in-lu fee to compensate for wetland impacts. The applicant agrees with Special Condition Five conditions. Next slide. Commission staff recommends that the commission find that with implementation and adherence to Special Conditions 1 through 12, the proposed project would be carried out consistent with the coastal, with coastal access, coastal hazards, biological, archaeological, and tribal cultural resource protection policies of the Coastal Act. The motion to approve CDP 5-24-0398 is on page six of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. There's no addendum to the staff report. The applicants are in agreement with the staff recommendation and the special conditions. A few letters in support were received and are included as correspondence. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's start, are there any expertises on this item? Seeing none, we'll take this out to the public for a public comment on this item, unless there's a presentation from OCTA.
I do believe the applicant is.
We have OCTA on Zoom again. They're Anna's panelists, and you're free to unmute and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to speak today. Again, my name is Darrell Johnson. I'm the chief executive officer of the Orange County Transportation Authority. And first, just on behalf of our partners at the California State Transportation Agency, the LoSan Rail Corridor Agency, and MetroLink, we'd like to thank your staff as well as you for considering and supporting our long-term challenges not only our long-term challenges, but addressing the emergency conditions threatening the coastal rail corridor in San Clemente. As was just stated by your staff, we do appreciate the staff's recommendation and concur with it to approve the important permit that will enable us to move forward with expediency. The recommendation does share our, reflects our shared goal of preserving public access to the coast, protecting sensitive resources, and ensuring the long-term resiliency both of the coastline and the critical link in the Southern California rail system. As you just heard, the unstable bluffs in this area pose real risk, not just to infrastructure, but to public safety and mobility across Southern California. The proposed catchment wall and the restoration of the pedestrian trail represent a carefully-considered solution that balances the urgent protection with environmental responsibility. I'd like to also acknowledge our strong partnership with the city of San Clemente. It goes back many, many years, and I'm not sure if all of the commission knows, but OCTA did fund and encourage the original pedestrian trail. That's why we're very happy to make sure that we include the reopening of that in our project. We look forward to working with the city to make sure that we can reopen this very popular trail. That's one of the most frequented used trails in the region for coastal access. I do think it's important to note, one item on Special Condition Six, we are in support of it. The California State Transportation Agency, Secretary Omar Shokin and his team have agreed to lead that long-term adaptation study. We look forward to working with them and all of the partners on that. We will be supportive of it. We are excited about it, that they will lead that effort. And we're committed to supporting that effort to make sure that we meet Special Condition Six. We do understand the importance of working together over the long term to develop solutions that benefit not just the rail line and the infrastructure quarter, but the entire coast and all the communities that we collectively serve. We absolutely look forward to working, continuing to work with the commission, the commission staff as we move forward with this phase of the stabilization effort. As I stated in my comments earlier today, this is our emergency activities. We continue to focus on the activities that will bridge the gap between the emergency activities and then the time that it may take to look at the full adaptation and relocation potential of the quarter. We do have technical staff with me in the room here in Orange County to answer any technical questions if needed. I would like to just defer any further comments. For now, welcome the opportunity to provide any closing remarks or answer any questions. And again, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have three other speakers. Andy Hall, followed by Brian Yanity, and then Susie Whitelaw. Andy Hall is being moved in as a panelist right now. And when you're able to, please unmute and begin. Andy Hall, I see that you're unmuted. Please begin.
Perfect. Good afternoon, my name is Andy Hall and I serve as the city manager for the city of San Clemente. I support the recommendation of staff and hope that the commission will adopt the recommendation. This is the type of comprehensive project the Coastal Commission seeks. OCTA conducted active listening sessions with the public, held numerous meetings with city staff, saw input from public utility providers, and ensured that the use of the rail lines for passengers and freight would not be interrupted. The result is an effective, yet balanced approach that addresses the concerns with the minimum amount of environmental impact. I would like to commend OCTA on their approach to slope stabilization and public trail access in this location. It is an example of good government that should be recognized by the members of the Coastal Commission. Finally, in the larger. Finally, in the larger context of the work happening in San Clemente, the community is appreciative of the efforts of OCTA and the Coastal Commission to acknowledge how important this work is to the residents of San Clemente. Not since the original construction of the rail lines in the late 1880s has a project had so much impact on the coastline of San Clemente. While passionate expressions have been offered by residents, staff, and elected officials from San Clemente, we are fortunate that the Coastal Commission and OCTA have had the best interests of the community in mind. Once again, I support the proposal of OCTA and recommend approval of the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brian Yanity, and then Susie Whitelaw.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Brian Yanity from the Rail Passenger Association of California and Nevada. I had a slide or a map that could be shown, if that's okay?
Yes, we're bringing it up.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And, well, first, we, our organization, the Rail Passenger Association of California, requests that the Coastal Commission follow staff recommendations and approve the emergency coastal development permit, applied for by Orange County Transportation Authority to get this work done to stabilize the track through San Clemente. Rail PAC is in full support of all actions necessary to preserve and protect the vital rail line between LA and San Diego, or the Low Sand Line, which for decades has been the second busiest intercity passenger rail corridor in the US with up to 10,000 people a day riding through San Clemente. It's also a vital freight route, which supports the regional national economy and reduces truck traffic on parallel I-5, reducing pollution and wear and tear on the roads. Because it's the only direct link connecting the principal mainland port of the US Navy Pacific Fleet and Camp Pendleton to the rest of the nation, it's been designated as part of the US military's Strategic Rail Corridor Network. And we support the staff recommendation that approval is dependent on the 12 special conditions laid out in the staff report, particularly Special Condition Number Six, which is studying a long-term solution. And this is a high-level solution you see here on the map of relocating the track preferably up on higher ground, under I-5, or right next to it in parts. This is not a definitive engineering design, but this is what the long-term solution should be. The coastal bluffs and so forth and beaches will not last forever, as I'm sure we're all aware here. And I would also wanted to ask for clarification if the long-term railroad adaptation study in the Coastal Commission staff report is the same thing as the Calsta long-term study that was mentioned by CEO Johnson of OCTA. Thank you.
Thank you. And then our last speaker for this item is Susie Whitelaw. Susie.
Hello. Again, representing Saver Beach of San Clemente, and we would like to also voice our support for this project. OCTA Railroad has experienced several closures over the last couple of years. 100% of those closures have been the results of landslides originating from the east side of the tracks. This is the only emergency action that is truly an emergency and is going to help halt the closures of the railroad. None of the closures have ever involved coastal erosion from the west side of the tracks. We also really support the fact that this is a balanced project. It represents the best of both worlds. You're protecting the tracks and increasing coastal access and maintaining coastal access. And we really, really appreciate OCTA doing that. We also agree with the Coastal Commission requiring that they complete the long-term study for relocation of the tracks. And we would also like to request that the Coastal Commission also require that they continue in a timely manner, according to the original timeline, the short to midterm solutions, especially with regard to Area 4. The CEO, Dr. Hucklebridge, has expressed concern that there isn't an emergency at Area 4. We believe there is not. That because of the federal project, that beach on the west side of the tracks has grown by 30 to 40 feet ever since they started their project. If there wasn't an emergency two years ago, there isn't an emergency now. They're supposed to finish that report in six months from now. Let's wait six months, get it done, look at the environmental impacts before you spend $100 million on what will not be a temporary fix. It's going to be a permanent fix. Let's get it right the first time. Thank you.
Thank you. No more speakers.
All right. Well, I just want to start by thanking the members of the public for their comments and want to thank the representatives from OCTA for their comments as well. I'll just turn to staff to see if there's any other comments that you'd like to add.
Just one response to one of the commenters. They asked about the requirement in the CDP for the long-term study. And as you heard, Mr. Johnson say that Calsta has also agreed to do that study. Those are one and the same thing. Our understanding from talking with OCTA is their intent is yet, that yes, that that study should meet the requirements of our permit here, and we will be working with all parties involved to make sure that that happens to the maximum extent possible.
Great, thank you very much. All right, are there any questions?
One other, I'm sorry, I just wanted to mention too, we do have our technical staff here to answer questions if there are any questions from Commissioners. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to see if there's a Commissioner who'd like to make a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion. Yeah. Second.
He has to read it off, but yeah, we'll have you up for a second.
What happened?
You want to move the...
Okay, go. I've moved that Commission-approved coastal development permit, number 5240398 pursuant to the staff recommendation, and staff recommends a yes vote. Second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner O'Malley, seconded by Commissioner Redoni. The maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. And I guess before we go on to the vote, I just want to thank staff for all their hard work on this. And I just want to encourage OCTA to continue working collaboratively with our staff. I think, you know, when we're able to work on things together, it really helps us expedite through some of our challenges. And to the extent that we can continue having a strong productive relationship working together, I think we'll be able to overcome many of these challenges in a much more time-efficient way. And so with that, I'll ask Ms. Miller for a roll call vote.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Commissioner Escalante?
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nodoff?
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Oranga?
Aye.
Oranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Wilson, yes. Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right. Thank you all very much. We are cruising right through. And so with that, we'll move on to our second-to-last regular agenda item, actually, third-to-last, no, second-to-last, sorry. The San Diego Coast District's Deputy Director's Report. I'll turn to staff for their presentation on that item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And on this item, we're reporting the City of Del Mar's adoption of the Commission's suggested modifications. We're finding that adequate to complete the certification process. We're also reporting the issuance of three emergency actions, one to restore emergency vehicle access at Blacks Beach in San Diego, another to address instability of a public accessway in Encinitas, and a third has to do with sand buildup that's threatening a dock system in Mission Bay. Last, there are four permit waivers and one permit amendment. I do want to mention on the amendment that this is the City of San Diego's request to remove the Phase 2 sprung structures component of their new safe parking facilities project for the city's unhoused at the former H Barrick site near the airport. That amendment authorized the installation of two 41-foot-tall, 18,000-square-foot sprung structures. But the city is no longer pursuing that phase of the project. But they do intend to move forward with the safe parking facilities. So we haven't had any adverse comments in response to that amendment or to the waivers. So we're recommending, we're asking whether three or more Commissioners object to any of the waivers or the amendment.
All right. Are there any members of the public sign up to speak on this item?
I know, we just have a few available for questions.
Okay. So I'd like to ask whether three or more Commissioners object to the staff recommendation. Seeing none, Commission concurs. Moves us on to our last regularly scheduled item. Item number 17A, Appeal Number A-6-ENC-25-0008, Constantine Francis V. Living Trust 06-08-92. And so I'll turn it to staff to kick us off on this item.
Thank you. And Camila Pata with our San Diego Coast District Office is going to do that presentation. If we could bring up the PowerPoint for that. And Camila, go ahead when you're ready.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Item 17A is an appeal by Mike Seskin of a City of Encinitas permit for construction of a detached two-family dwelling with two attached garages, an attached carport, and two detached ADUs landscaping and site improvements on a vacant lot. The standard of review for this appeal is limited to the certified local coastal program, but the appeal cites several Coastal Act policies and other county and city code sections in addition to the LCP. Nevertheless, after reviewing the approved project and all of the appellant's allegations, staff has determined that the project and the city's actions are in conformance with the LCP and is recommending that the Commission find that the appeal raises no substantial issue. Since publication of the staff report, two comment letters were submitted from the appellant and an interested person. Staff has reviewed the arguments, and each has been fully addressed in the staff report and in an addendum, which has been posted on the Commission's website. Next slide, please. The project site is a vacant lot located in the community of Cardiff-by-the-Sea, east of San Alejo Road and the Low Sand Railline, west of Suma Avenue and south of Santa Fe Drive, between 1445 and 1487 San Alejo Avenue. The lot is approximately 9,975 square feet and approximately 175 feet from the bluff. The vacant lot is surrounded to the north, south, and east by a mixture of single-family residences, duplexes, multifamily residences, and by roads and the ocean to the west. There is no permit history for the project site. Next slide, please. As mentioned earlier, the approved project is the construction of a detached two-family dwelling with two attached garages, an attached carport, and two detached ADUs landscaping and site improvements on a vacant lot. The appellant contends that the project was approved by the city does not conform to the City of Encinitas's certified LCP, the Cardiff-by-the-Sea specific plan, the Coastal Act, and the County of San Diego Consolidated Fire Code with regard to zoning, density, scenic and visual qualities, community character, hazards, and public access. However, the grounds for an appeal are limited to claims that the approved development does not conform to the standards in the certified LCP. As such, the claims regarding the Coastal Act, the Cardiff-by-the-Sea specific plan, which does not include this location, and County of San Diego Consolidated Fire Code do not form valid grounds for an appeal. The staff report discusses, and I will summarize, the claim of inconsistency with the certified LCP in addition to the other claims. Next slide, please. First, the appellant claims that the project is inconsistent with zoning and density. The proposed project was originally described in the city's report as two single-family dwellings to be built on a single lot, and the appellant raised the issue that the project did not meet the definition of a single-family dwelling, which specifically states that each single-family dwelling is located on its own lot or parcel. The city amended the project description to the more accurate description of detached two-family dwellings instead of two single-family dwellings. Despite the misnomer, the cited LCP policy is in the definition section of the city's certified LCP and does not dictate density on the site. The proposed project is located in the Residential 11, R11 Zone, and complies with the standards of the zone, including meeting the density requirements. At this density, the parcel is allowed to construct two residential units. The housing types permissible within the zone are single-family, two-family, three-family, and multifamily dwellings. In response to the staff report, the appellant submitted a comment letter and claims that two ADUs are not allowed. However, the LCP does allow for up to two ADUs in multifamily zones, such as the R11 Zone. Thus, the project does not appear to raise a substantial issue in regards to conformance of the zoning and density policies of the LCP. Next slide, please. Second, the appellant claims that the project is inconsistent with scenic and visual qualities and community character of the surrounding neighborhood due to the proposed density of the development and cites Coastal Act and Cardiff-by-the-Sea specific plan policies. However, neither the Coastal Act nor the Cardiff-by-the-Sea specific plan are the standard of review for this appeal. Although the Cardiff-by-the-Sea specific plan is part of the certified LCP, the project site is not within the specific plan area. Nevertheless, the proposed project has been designed to ensure that the existing desirable character of the community is maintained and will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and will not block public views. For example, the vacant lot is sloped, and the proposed structures have been designed to meet the reduced height limit of 12 feet at the eastern side of the lot, the highest point. Thus, these claims do not appear to raise a substantial issue. Next slide, please. Third, the appellant claims that the project does not comply with the hazard avoidance policies of the Coastal Act and Cardiff-by-the-Sea specific plan, and does not comply with the County of San Diego Consolidated Fire Code due to the proposed 10-feet-wide driveway and density of the proposed project. The appellant claims that the design of the development would create fire safety risks, hazardous conditions for pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists, and that the city did not provide a comprehensive safety review. These concerns regarding driveway design were reiterated in a letter submitted in response to the staff report and addressed in an addendum. As explained earlier, the policies cited in the appeal and the response letter do not apply here, including the cited fire code, and do not form grounds for an appeal contention. While we appreciate the concern for safety, the project has been designed, reviewed, including by the fire department, and continued and conditioned to ensure that the public health, safety, and welfare of the community are maintained in compliance with the LCP. Thus, the proposed project does not appear to raise a substantial issue regarding hazards. Next slide, please. Lastly, the appellant claims that the project is not in compliance with the public access policies of the Coastal Act. The site is not between the first public road and sea, but lies east of Highway 101 and the Low Sand Railline and the Coastal Rail Trail, a public path that runs parallel to the tracks. The appellant contends that the proposed project lacks adequate parking for the proposed density, and residents will need to park across the street, therefore reducing available parking spaces for the public visiting and using the coastal trail. However, the project complies with all parking requirements and will provide six onsite parking spaces, which will reduce the likelihood that residents will have to park on the street in public parking spots, impacting public access to the coast. Therefore, the proposed project does not appear to raise a substantial issue regarding public access and recreation. Next slide, please. Therefore, upon review of the locally approved project and the certified LCP, the construction of a detached two-family dwelling with two attached garages, an attached carport, and two detached ADUs landscaping and site improvements on a vacant lot does not raise a substantial issue. The appellant assertions do not identify inconsistencies with the LCP, and none of the allegations raise a substantial issue. Thus, staff recommends that the Commission determine that the project raises no substantial issue regarding conformance with the certified LCP. The motion can be found on Page Six of the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'd like to bring it back to the Commission to see if there's any expertes. Seeing none, I guess we should probably start with the applicant and followed by the appellant. So is there a representative from the applicant?
Typically, the appellant goes first, but I don't believe the appellant is available.
Okay. Well, then I'll just ask, is the appellant available?
I know, we don't have the appellant signed up.
Okay, then we'll go to the applicant. The applicant's here, we'll give you 30 minutes if that's necessary.
Okay, the applicant, we have Tyler Van Streit on. You're in as a panelist, I see. You should be able to unmute yourself and begin.
There I am. Great. Thanks for the time, I'll keep it brief. I just want to speak to the journey that got us here a little bit. It's been a long process. We've worked diligently with the City of Encinitas staff. That includes planning, engineering, fire, environmental. Project was recommended for approval by the staff at each of the points, and Encinitas Planning Commission and City Council both unanimously approved the projects, or the project. I'd like to note that the only... I'd like to note that the only reason the project even went to see council is due to an appeal made by the same appellant that brings us here today. So at no point has the appellant raised an issue that's carried any weight with any governing jurisdiction, and it seems based on the staff report, that's still the case. We're in full agreement with staff recommendation that the commission determine that no substantial issue exists. I do have just two very minor comments. The site plan graphics showing the driveway in a blue rectangle, the driveway is roughly twice as wide as that graphic shows. All the written verbal descriptions given are accurate, I just want to make sure that no one's misled by that particular graphic. And then also, in addressing the concern about vehicles having to back down this driveway, staff report states that there appears to be sufficient room for drivers to exit, face out as an option, and I just want to make it abundantly clear that that is indeed the case. The motor court area between the two garages and the ADU parking was configured with this specific goal in mind. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and I'll leave the rest to the time. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. And then, is there anybody from the local government who wishes to speak on this item?
There's no one else signed up to speak for this item.
Okay. All right, then we'll bring it back to commission for any questions, comments, or action.
Happy to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that commission determine that appeal number A-6-ENC-25-0008 raises no substantial issue with respect to the grounds on which the appeal has been filed under Section 30603 of the Coastal Act, and I ask for a yes vote.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, seconded by Commissioner Nodoff. The maker of the motion is asking for a yes vote. I'll turn it to Ms. Miller for a roll call.
Yes.
Escalante, yes. Commissioner Harmon?
Yes.
Harmon, yes. Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Hart, yes. Commissioner Redoni?
Yes.
Redoni, yes. Commissioner Nodoff?
Aye.
Nodoff, yes. Commissioner Uranga?
Aye.
Uranga, yes. Commissioner Wilson? Commissioner Aguirre?
Yes.
Aguirre, yes. Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
O'Malley, yes. Chair Cummings?
Aye.
Cummings, yes. The vote is unanimous.
All right, thank you very much. Good luck on your project. And with that, I'm wondering, do we have minutes that require approval? Seeing none. Any commissioner reports? Seeing none. And any commission subcommittee reports? I will briefly just mention that Commissioner Wilson and I met with the Student Homes Coalition. This was after the Alvarez bill was amended, but we just took the time to meet with them to establish a relationship and discuss with them some of their concerns around student housing, and we're looking forward to continuing to work with them to help address some of the concerns around building student housing and making sure that there's adequate student housing in the coastal zone. So next, conservancy report. I guess I can just report out on the coastal conservancy that we did meet back in April in Santa Cruz. We took tours of some of the sites that have been impacted, in particular Seacliff State Beach, which has been getting repeatedly impacted through the storms in 2023 and 2024. We also went to the Santa Cruz Wharf and looked at some of the impacts there, and also in South County along the Paharo River, an area where the Santa Cruz County Land Trust has purchased a few hundred acres worth of marginal farm that is going to be converted into wetlands due to the fact that when it's shoaled up during the winter, waves will break over into the river during storm surge and will flood some of those fields, and they were even saying that sometimes up to three miles of flooding will occur, and we have salt water on farmland that's not a good mix if you're trying to grow crops. And so for some of those areas that they've now purchased, they're going to be converting those areas into wetland to help buffer some of the impacts of climate change. And so that more or less concludes my report from the Coastal Conservancy. And so with that, moving on to item number 23, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy Report. Commissioner Botch is absent, and so that moves us on to San Monica Bay Restoration Report. Any updates on that? Seeing none. Deputy Attorney General's report, I'll look to our...
Yes, thank you, Chair Cummings. I just, because it's Public Service Week, I just wanted to thank and acknowledge my colleagues at the AG's office. They're representing the commission in about 50 different litigation matters right now, and they're working long hours, but they're dedicated to the mission of the commission here.
And we appreciate their representation as well. And so with that, I think we're going to end our regularly scheduled meeting. We do have a closed session today, so we'd like to ask for members of the public and all those who are not in a closed session, if you can please leave the room, we'll move into closed session. So we can take maybe a five-minute break and come back at 3:35, and then we'll go into closed session.